Okay. Excellent. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. It's July the 17th, GBOS regular meeting. We're just going to go through a couple of statements at the beginning. The Board of Supervisors, Committees and Subcommittee is the subject of the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 4462-310, Alaska Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. We operate under the Girdwood Public Meeting standard of conduct. I call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. My name is Mike Edgington. I'm going to hand over to my co-chair to do the land acknowledgement, then we'll do proper roll call.
Okay, thank you. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land we reside on. Community of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be Denina and Olympic homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you. And then doing the roll call more formally, my name is Mike Edgington. I'm co-chair and Housing and Economic Development Supervisor, my left, right, sorry.
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Fire Department Supervisor.
The way left.
Jennifer Wingard, Land Use Supervisor.
Brian Burnett, Parks and Rec Supervisor.
Thank you, and Guy Wade has an excused absence this evening. Quick announcements, we have two scheduled budget meetings in July and August, and space for a third if necessary. Public is acknowledged, is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Up discussion, stay productive, direct comments to the board rather than other members of public, keep your comments focused on the business under discussion, and be respectful of everyone's opinions. Chugash Electric will hold a community meeting on June the 25th at 6:30 here to address right-of-way clearing plans for this summer. Let's jump into the agenda. Do we hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing any, let's do this by assent. Not hearing any objections, so we approve tonight's agenda. We're doing something a little different tonight, so we're going to have, we have a consent agenda items. So we'll do the minutes as, we'll do the minutes as one item. And actually, I think what we'll do is we'll do the minutes as one item, and then we will do the request purchase as second item. So can I hear a motion to approve the sets of minutes?
This is Brianna, I move to approve the three sets of minutes on the agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any discussion, so again, we'll do it by consent. Not seeing any. Okay. And then if we could just get, just a very brief statement on the request for purchase of gravel, if you could just confirm me. Yeah, to do that publicly.
We're looking to buy 2,500 tonnes of gravel. Let me get this real quick. Yeah. Okay. Yes, we're looking to buy 2,500 tonnes of type 2A gravel. We have opportunity, there's excess on the project left from Chugash out there, and Western has that available. And so we can buy it and have it stacked at $22 a tonne. And we're getting quotes right now from ASG at almost $25 a tonne, and that's not stacked. And so it's a good opportunity for us to get a stockpile of type 2A. We last year had several road projects, and then the emergency repairs several years before that kind of depleted our stockpile. So it's always good for us to have type 2A in the yard for standard maintenance projects, and then also for emergency response. We're pretty stocked up on riprap, wrap, and other ditch lining materials, but this would give us opportunity, and since it's so close, it gives us a good opportunity to get it at a good price. So, so we're asking to use 57,000 out of the capital budget to purchase this material.
Okay, thank you. Could I hear a formal motion? So what do you do? Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
This is to approve 200, 2,500 tonnes at 457,000, right. Any discussion? The board?
Question, Kyle. Have we, if we had two and a half tonnes of, on standby in the past, does this, or does this represent a pretty big step up?
This would be a big step up. I mean, I think we've had close to, close to just under 2,000 tonnes of material on hand. But, you know, we'll deplete it through the summer and sometimes restock it. We usually just try to take our care of opportunities when we can get it at a really good price.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion from the board? Questions from the audience? Seeing anything in the room? Not seeing any hands online.
Say thank you to Kyle for getting that together and comparing the two prices. Or, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move straight to a vote. We'll do this. Let's do a quick roll call vote, just so we have. Mike Edgington, yes. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Brian Burnett.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. We'll get the hang of doing a consent agenda in future meetings. Okay, we're going to jump straight to presentations. With, first presentation is Project Anchorage Sales Tax Proposal. I'll say a couple of words, and then we'll introduce Jenna Wright from AEDC. Jenna can remind us what AEDC stands for. So this is a proposal, which I think many of you have probably seen in the press the last week, that comes from a group of citizens and business leaders across the municipality for introduction of a sales tax. Still some way away from becoming a, becoming an item in front of the assembly. So there'll be a full process after this as well. But I'd like to hand over to Jenna Wright from AEDC to present this. Thank you. You're welcome. I think you're on mute, Jenna. Maybe we are on mute. No, we cannot yet.
Not now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I changed my microphone settings. You think we have this figured out by now. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hello, everyone. I'm going to go and share my screen, so I can walk us through just a few slides. So as Mike said, my name's Jenna Wright. I'm the president and CEO of the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation. I'm also a lifelong Alaskan, and I'm really excited to be announcing Project Anchorage, which is an initiative designed to spur economic growth, lower our property taxes, capture visitor spending, and improve the quality of life for Anchorage residents so that we can retain and attract talent. So if you're unfamiliar, AEDC was originally formed in 1987 as a municipal entity to help Anchorage recover from the recession that was occurring at the end of the 80s. We were spun off two years later, and in 1989, we became a private nonprofit existing to encourage growth and diversity in the Anchorage economy, promote a favorable business climate, and improve the standard of living of Anchorage residents. Now, Project Anchorage, I'll start with where we took inspiration from. We took inspiration from Oklahoma City, which in the 1990s was facing some very similar challenges to what Alaska and Anchorage is facing today. Their economy was struggling, it was pretty stagnant, and they had young people and families that were leaving left and right. They also had a pretty public embarrassment when they lost the bid for a United Airlines facility because the employees, the executives, came with their families and said, there's no way that we could ever live in this place. So after they kind of cleaned their wounds, they decided to invest in themselves, and they implemented a temporary 1% sales tax to fund, to fund projects that were aimed at making the city a better place to live. And so as a result of these investments, about 30 years later, Oklahoma City has attracted billions of dollars of private investment. Their population has grown year over year, and their economy has absolutely booming. So since that original vote on the sales tax in 1993, voters have reauthorized this program a total of four times, most recently passing with 72% of the vote, which is, which is pretty remarkable. So here are a couple of examples of what Oklahoma City has spent their revenue on. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see Scissor Tail Park, which is a 70-acre downtown park that has splash pads and amphitheater. It's got trails, different stages, and a whole lot more. On the right-hand side of the screen, they built an innovation district, which serves as a small business development and entrepreneurship hub. And then they also have an innovation hall, which they were breaking ground on when we were there in September of 2022, that has lodging on site for visitors from all over the country, and I believe even the world. Here's a couple more examples. On the left-hand side of the screen, I have no idea what these people are doing, but it looks like they're having a great time during a Red Bull event at a place called River Sport Rapids, which is now also an Olympic whitewater rafting facility that they built with this, with this public investment. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the Paycom Center, which is where the Oklahoma City Thunder now plays at the large sports and entertainment center that was built as part of the MAPS program. So while we certainly took inspiration from Oklahoma City's success, our proposal is really tailored to the specific needs that we're seeing in the municipality of Anchorage. And a lot of work has gone into the proposal that was released last week, and that I'm presenting on today. We took about 20 business leaders to Oklahoma City in the fall of 2022 to really experience firsthand what could be accomplished if the city came together to invest in themselves. And we were so inspired by what we saw, that when we got back, we really couldn't stop talking about it. Luckily, those conversations caught the attention of two of our assembly members who said they really liked the idea of Oklahoma City MAPS program, but they also wanted to see property tax relief for Anchorage residents, which is something that we also recognized as a critical need. So to develop the ultimate structure that we have today, we convened a committee at the beginning of last summer to debate the merits, whether there was interest, and we established that there was interest. And so then we started talking about, like, what's the structure that makes the most sense for Anchorage? And what are appropriate exemptions and things of those nature if we're going to implement a sales tax in Anchorage? So after this series of meetings, we produced a comprehensive sales tax recommendation report that informs all of our work today. And a lot of the recommendations are based on research that was done by the University Center for Economic Development. Now, later that fall, and then through the beginning of this year, I started to work with different private businesses and business associations to gather support for the tax and ask them to join a business coalition to help implement this tax that ultimately modeled around both Oklahoma City as well as Project 80, as some of you remember, the, the investment that we made back in the 80s with the Coastal Trail Museum, the Performing Arts Center, and, and things like that. So we're meeting every other week with the goal of getting Project Anchorage passed in the, or on the April of 2025 ballot. And as Mike mentioned, before that happens, we need to turn the proposal over to the assembly for their ultimate approval as well. So now we'll get into some of the specifics of the proposal. First, the first aspect is property tax relief. And so what this proposal does is it exchanges a 2% sales tax for an approximate 20% reduction in property taxes. Now, on an average home in Anchorage that is worth roughly $450,000, that would be about $1,200 in annual savings, taking, you know, quick math, $100 off the mortgage payment each month. And, you know, out in Girdwood, it would likely affect residents quite a bit more than that because the property values are so much higher than in the municipality. Now, this exchange is completely under the cap, and it's not going to result in any new revenues for the municipality, but rather it's just exchanging an estimated $120 million per year that's coming from property taxes, will now be coming through sales taxes. And a benefit of this is that over 20% would come from visitors as well. And then the second piece is aimed at improving our quality of life. So I mentioned Project 80, where we built quite a few projects, like the Silverd Arena, the Coastal Trail, the museum, the Performing Arts Center, the Egan Center, and some other gems that we really still love today. But if you think about it, that was the last time we made any meaningful public investment in quality of life type of capital projects. And we really believe that it's time that we do this again. The harsh reality is that we're losing our young people. And if we want our economy to grow, we need to not only retain the young, talented Alaskan families that we have today, or even those that are graduating from high school, but we also need to attract even more working age adults. And so as we look around the country at cities that are doing a good job at attracting talent, they're doing so because of the standard of life that these residents are experiencing. So in this part of the proposal, it's really aimed at solving those goals or those problems that we're experiencing. And so the other one-third of that 3% tax would be new revenues that are going towards capital quality of life projects. And just last week, we launched projectanchorage.com, which is an online portal where people from all over the municipality can go to submit their project ideas. And it is our intent to go through that list of projects that are submitted completely by the public and pull out ideas that have geographic diversity, that have subject diversity, and that have broad public support. So when I say geographic diversity, we want something in Chugash, we want something in Girdwood, we want something in like various Anchorage neighborhoods. Subject diversity means like, it can't be Jenna's dream of just having a million trails all over. We got to do some things for arts and museums and libraries and, you know, all kinds of things. Like, I've heard skate parks and amphitheaters are rising to the top of interest. So really, something for everybody is, is the goal. And so once we have that list of kind of final projects that we think have pretty broad-based public support, we would then present that list to the Anchorage Assembly for them to include with the ordinance that we're aiming to have on the ballot in April of 2025. And so what that means is that Anchorage residents would be able to see exactly what they're voting on and which projects would be funded. And they can also feel really confident that the project came from more of a community-driven process. And so a couple of last-minute details that are really important to know. One is that people that don't live here are going to pay at least 20% of the tax. And unfortunately, we don't really have the numbers on the amount that commuters would pay of this tax, but we certainly know that it's, it's more than 0%, which is why I'm saying at least 20% of the tax would be paid for by visitors, because just that number is, is out of state visitors. And then we are really sensitive to the fact that sales taxes can be regressive if they're not properly structured and impact our lower-income households in Anchorage at a disproportionate rate. So for that reason, we put together a list of exemptions that are on the right-hand side of the screen, and those are covering all of the household necessities like childcare, most groceries, medical care, rental housing, financial services, and a few other smaller categories. And then the one other thing to note is that the maximum amount of a single transaction that would be taxed would be up to $1,000. So everything over $1,000, that amount, like, let's say you buy a car, it would be a maximum of $30 tax. And then lastly, I just wanted to show that this is our current business coalition that's aimed at enacting this tax on the April 2025 ballot. And the biggest takeaway that I want those on this call to think about is to think about, you know, creatively what our next chapter looks like, and think about some really great ideas that Girdwood could submit to projectanchorage.com. And that's the, the end of my presentation, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't know if time allows for that tonight.
I think we can definitely allow a few minutes of questions.
Okay, great.
First of all, I'll open it to the board. Does anyone have any questions from the board?
I, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Brianna, thank you, Jenna. I, I think I read somewhere that this would lapse or expire in five years. And would that be something that you're emulating over from the other city? That they maybe renew this every time the voters had the opportunity? So you're pitching it for the, for five years, correct?
Definitely our intent for the tax to sunset, and five years is coming from Oklahoma City. They've done different timeframes on the different, the four different iterations of MAPS, but their first one was about five years, and so right now, that's our recommendation. That is an aspect that could potentially change when it gets to the assembly discussion, but certainly something around that timeframe is what we're looking for in a sunset provision.
Sure.
Thank you. And I have one more for the, beside the project ideas under the examples for exemptions, would community members be better off submitting ideas to assembly members or the website for now?
The website, because in terms of a timeline, we are going to be collecting projects up until September 15th. And then in September and October, we're going to evaluate the project, gauge the public support, the parameters, like I talked about, making sure there's something all over the place for everybody. And then we would give a list of projects to the assembly for their deliberation and hopefully approval for the April 2025 ballot.
Thank you. Any other question? Brian, go ahead.
Brian Burnett here. So we have a, an opportunity to have it on the ballot in April 2025. Assuming that it would be successful, when would you see sales tax starting to be collected? What, what sort of, what sort of a staff would it take to put together? Sales tax is a, is a new concept in Anchorage. Would it work through the tax department that we have now? And, or would this be a whole new office and, and staff to manage it?
Yeah, those are great questions. And ultimately, there are some things that we're trying not to be too prescriptive on and leave up to the assembly and the administration on how they would implement it. While we don't have a general sales tax, we certainly have offices that can collect the bed tax, marijuana tax, alcohol tax, car rental tax. So, you know, I would imagine it would fall within the, in that particular office, but we certainly would need to expand the administration. To what degree, I don't have that answer for you, though.
Follow-up if I may.
Of course.
Then, how quick do you think you could spin it up? Was what I asked first.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry, I missed that. That would also be something that we would defer to the assembly, but if it passes in April, you know, I wouldn't expect that it would take longer than January of the next year, and perhaps even sooner than that. But it's all about how it would be written in the final ballot ordinance.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one more. I'll ask, I'll ask a question. Two questions. One is, one comment I've heard from other people is this, is this just going to have the effect of replacing the capital money that comes from the state? I mean, is the state going to look at Anchorage, see this $60, $70 million, and, and not, not support, or indeed the governor not support capital expenditure within, within the municipality? And I should note, we have a member of the legislature sitting in the room at the moment, so maybe they can... Is there not a risk?
They can, they can certainly weigh in on that question. I don't think so. From my understanding, these types of projects aren't often funded by the state. This is not looking to replace any sort of like transportation capital funding by any means. And, you know, one thing to note, if we're talking about state dynamics, is that as we evaluate revenue sources for the entire state, and there's legislators that, you know, introduce the possibility of a statewide sales tax in this most recent session, Anchorage currently doesn't have a sales tax. And so that really plays into their projections about how much revenue would be, would go into the overall state coffers. So by us putting forth a sales tax that goes towards the specific aspects that we're looking for as municipalities, it's kind of a defensive move if something like a statewide sales tax would, would occur. Because currently, we're one of the few municipalities, boroughs, cities that don't have a sales tax.
Yeah, thank you, that makes sense. And my, my second question is, it, I'm wondering if it's really likely that you can, you can come up with a short list of projects and present them to the assembly, and the assembly not basically redo that list? I'm just wondering, have you, have there been kind, how was your feeling about how that relationship works? About whether you just hand over a completed project and they just say yes? Or whether...
Well, it, it will not be the first time that they're aware of this proposal. You know, we, we've already reached out to every single assembly member on an individual basis, and we're going to continue to be very collaborative with them along the way. And even as we're, as we're talking about different projects that are going in different assembly districts, we certainly want to have conversations with the assembly members to make sure it makes sense. Because I, I don't think the approach you described of, you know, kind of leaving it in the dark and saying, hey, look, here's a list, don't ask any questions, like, that's certainly not going to work. So our goal is to be very, very collaborative along the way to where we come up with a proposal that, like I said, has something for every district that everybody's excited about, both in terms of geographic and subject diversity.
Thank you, thank you. Jennifer?
Could you, hey, this is Jeff Quinian. Could you just tell us a little bit about how this might affect limited road surface areas like Girdwood that are light on property taxes? And how that's going to affect the overall budget?
Sure. And I'm not a municipal budget expert, but there is no intent for this proposal to change anything about the service areas that operate outside of those like standard, standard media districts. I, I understand that's formula-based, and the same amount of funding that you would receive under the current formula would continue to go back to the different service areas. Again, there's, there's no intent for this to change any sort of those formulas at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the community or the audience? Not seeing any hands here, and I'm not seeing any hands online. Thank you so much indeed. It's been really interesting. Thank you very much indeed, Jen.
You are very welcome. Projectanchorage.com, let's see your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to item number four. Potential presentation from Ensta. Brianna?
Thank you. I did ask Sterling Lopez if he was planning to be here, and he said he has still had no update from DNR, so no change. He will reach out as soon as they've issued a decision.
Okay, should we take this off the agenda in the future until we have positive news?
So, because he said he has Margaret's contact, he's going to contact GBOS. And I'm sure he appreciates having it in place holder, but right now, it's just place holder.
Okay, so in that case, let's move on to number five, legislative report. We'll start with Senator Geisel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I wanted to touch on three topics that I'm kind of focused on related to Girdwood. First one, very briefly, capital budget still has not been signed. So we're still waiting, hoping very much that Little Bears will be funded. So I know Crystal had talked, had asked last month whether writing a letter of support would be helpful. I have been encouraging people to do that, just to remind the governor that this is a family-friendly appropriation of only $500,000 that will make a huge difference in Girdwood for childcare. The second thing that's been on my list is to respond to Mike's email about the airport. I'm so sorry. I realized today it's been over a month since you emailed me. But I've taken action on what you sent me. You sent me a copy of the letter that you had commented on related to the project a year ago. And so I contacted DOT, and the guy that is in charge of the airports is a guy named Clark Cox. And so I set up a Teams meeting with him, and I invited Cody Rice to join me. Some of you may know Cody, he lives over in the area of the airport. He also serves as legislative staff. So I kind of wanted another person there to kind of listen to what DOT was saying. We went through most of the questions, actually, Mike, that is in the letter, the comment letter that the board had submitted. And basically, the answers that we got back, well, Cody brought up some of the, the, the community's perceptions about what DOT or the state would be doing to facilitate this hotel project. And one of the impressions that, that Cody had been hearing was that the project proposers were expecting DOT to prepare the land, prepare the road, all those kinds of things. DOT was very clear, all the costs for this project fall on the, on the project proposers. So that very, it's a pretty steep hill there. So that very it's a pretty steep hill there where they're planning to put this building. And if they're planning to lower that down, that's going to be pretty expensive. The other thing D O T pointed out is public comment is not nearly done on this project. They still have to go through a NIPA project, a NIPA proposal approval. And that is full of public comment and is a costly project. So basically, the message that Cody and I got from it, and it'd be great to hear from Cody, he probably heard some other details that I didn't capture as well, is that this project is a long way from reaching any kind of final conclusion. So that was reassuring to me, anyway. And also reassuring that D O T wasn't planning to take on any of the costs related to this project. And the last thing is kind of a new thing. I got an email this last week from Scott Swift about Crow Creek Road. And the terrible conditions in, you know, nobody's claimed to own the road, right? This is very much like the Anchorage Hill site. There's lots of areas like that. So in in emailing with Scott, apparently, he has been working with Randy Salt, the Assemblyman, right? And I'm happy to collaborate with all the parties that own the land along the way, U S Forest Service. D O T has a piece of it. I think the Muni has a piece. There's some private landowners. But to sit down and see what can be done to arrive at a collaborative agreement to upgrade the road and and to maintain it going forward. I've had actually some pretty good success with D O T on other projects on the hillside. So I think we could all come to the table and and kind of give a little. We might be able to solve that problem. That's a little that's a little Pollyanna-ish, because I know the problem's been there for a very long time. But those were the three topics that have kind of been on my radar related to Girdwood. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any question?
I have a comment real quick. Thank you, Senator Geisel. Just on Crow Creek Road, it was graded last in the last five days, but up until a certain point.
Yes.
So I don't know if that was a result of the conversation, but it was done, and maybe that's normal for this time of year, too.
I think I think what what Scott told me is it's normal for this time of year, and it's only up to, is it the mine possibly? And the rest of the road is just really in bad shape, and it's actually damaging vehicles.
Right, the coals are ripping.
Yes, and the bridge apparently is in very bad condition. So. So anyway, I'll I'll be happy to work with folks on that. All right.
Any other queries, Jennifer?
Yeah, actually, so I I met. Are you also working with some of the Crow Creek residents yet? Or do they should they contact you? Like, the ones who've been, there are several people who've been working on this project over or this the concerns over the number of years. Should they contact you or what's the best thing? Like, we have a couple of people in particular who've been hard at work on this for a while.
That's great to know. Yeah, they can contact me. Scott is the one that reached out to me. And I've known about this. I've represented Girdwood since twenty eleven, so I've heard about this this project before. But yeah, happy the more the merrier and and property owners along the way. That'd be great if we could all get together. Somebody salt is going to kind of be the the leader of the of the of the tribe here to get the meeting together. So. Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions from the audience in the room or online? Oh, yeah.
So you brought up the NIPA process for the hotel under that same same land disposal is what Holton Hills was sold under. So with that in mind, I'm curious about, because the phase one disposal has occurred for our hills. They have received federally funded dollars from Rukowski. How do we go about ensuring that that full on NIPA process is actually created for the Holton Hills project since it did receive federally funded dollars? But then also that unfortunately, in this valley, only one study has one project has ever had a categorical exclusion. So the NIPA process, if you're familiar with it, there's three options that you can get. So we've never had a full on scale NIPA process down in this entire valley. The only project that's ever done it is the airport D O T project. The airport is a state should create, and that was just done under categorical exclusion. So I just want to make sure that that we're all going forward, that the NIPA process tests the whole project, which is the same project on land disposal that occurred. Anyways, it's kind of curious. Do we have any update on that? You mentioned it for the hotels, so.
I don't have any update on the Holton Hills at all.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just the new process, which is just curious.
Yes, yes, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We go through the rest of the list. I didn't see anyone from Laddie Shaw's office, but I could give them the opportunity in case someone is here. The mayor's office. Do we have assembly members? Randy Stoltz, Zach Johnson?
I'm here. Randy's here.
All right, please go ahead.
All right, know where to start. So let's start with Crow Creek. So, yes, Scott reached out a couple of weeks ago. So we've been in dialogue. We're waiting. I've had responses back from the municipality. They want till this Friday to dig a little deeper to get the delineation of who owns or who's responsible, what section of road. Once we have that, we're going to pull together, as Senator Geisel said, D O T, municipality, parks, and any other property owners that need to be part of that conversation to make sure we understand the problem. And then we can start working on the potential solutions for that. And then also, since Janet did such a fantastic job with Project Anchorage, I'm one of the representatives from the Assembly, the A E D C. And I'll just I'll throw in a couple of questions. If we passed it in April, we could probably have it up and running in about six months. So ideally, if you had some sales tax collected in twenty twenty five, you would see an impact on your twenty twenty six property taxes. If you didn't collect anything, you would see no impact. And and whatever's collected under the two percent for property tax goes straight to the tax cap formula, and it's just a one for one replacement. And then the other piece is as far as project ideas, absolutely Project Anchorage is the right place to go, because once we have the legislation drafted, which I've already started working on with two other members who haven't seen it yet, but have said they would be on board. Then we have the Opens Meeting Act, and we cannot discuss this with any other members other than our three, except through open work sessions and at assembly meetings where it's a public forum. So let's go through some of the items that have recently taken place. Or actually, yeah, so at the last meeting, we did not hear on Anchorage Police Department Chief-elect Cross. That was postponed, the meeting of July second. So everything looks good that I believe she will be confirmed. The Home Initiative, A O twenty twenty three dash eighty seven, was postponed to June twenty fifth. I don't believe that affects Girdwood, but it may affect if you have property in in the Anchorage area. A O twenty twenty four dash forty five S, which is somewhat related to the Home Initiative, failed, and we got A O twenty twenty four dash sixty four that was introduced immediately after. That allows the Assembly to to make some changes to planning and zoning without going through the Planning and Zoning Commission, or potentially without notifying of you you of a property of a change in property zoning for your property. So that will most likely be on the blocks for next Tuesday. I know eighty seven is. Let's see. As far as A F D wildfire mitigation coordinator position, that position has been a struggle to fill. It was reposted today, so the applicants they've been working with, they finally have moved on from that applicant or that candidate. And so they're now looking for a new applicant. So hopefully, we'll see that here shortly. And then coming up on the next assembly meeting on June twenty fifth, we're going to see item thirteen A, A O twenty twenty four dash fifty one. And I haven't seen this one yet, so I haven't looked at it, but it's going to refine the definition of electric bicycle and increase equitable access and improve user safety on two way mixed trails. I haven't seen it again, but there's been legislation through other authorities around controlling the speed limits for electric bicycles, because they can go quite fast, some of them. We will look at A R twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, which will extend the cold weather shelter at Anchorage to the end of June. And then we will look at, again, as I mentioned, the fourteen D, which is A O twenty twenty four dash forty four, which is related to the Home Initiative as well as the Home Initiative that night. But I think probably the only other thing worth mentioning is is come July first, we'll start reorganizing the committees. I will remain on A E D C, but I'll I'll become the Chair of Housing and Homelessness, and Cameron Perez Verdia will be my Vice Chair. And with that, I'll stop there and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Have a I'll take the privilege of asking a couple of quick questions. One, Randy, is I know you've mentioned, I think in passing, that the 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 property tax component would be inside the tax cap. But that would be replacing our the property taxes which go towards Girdwood services are outside the tax cap. So if it was going to replace those property taxes, then putting it back inside the tax cap is probably a disadvantage to us. It would be we'd be in a worse position longer term. So that might require some nuance and thinking when it comes to service areas, which I think relates somewhat to Jennifer's question earlier. And the second thing is, I think there was actually a press release on Home today. There's an S one coming out, which is a much, much simpler version of it. So again, it doesn't directly affect us, but it's it's in the general milieu of discussions on housing. Thank you.
Right. After this tall eighty eighty or forty five S failed, they significantly cut back eighty seven to hopefully make it simpler and hopefully get it to pass.
Looks that way. Thank you. Any questions in the in the audience here or online? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much indeed, Randy. Much appreciated. Not seeing our other assembly member, so I'll just go to school board. I didn't see anyone from the school board. And H O B A C, do we have a report from Tim Shum? Is that in the packet?
I have not.
I think gave one on land use, I believe, so there's probably an update from land use. Okay, let's move on to supervisor upcoming items. Does anybody have any announcements or comments from the board?
Only comment is there is no July Girdwood Trails Committee meeting.
Thank you.
This is Brianna. I have a couple. I wanted to circle back to something from our last quarterly meeting that community members were asking about the traffic study with the land lease at the airport, and Craig Lyon did follow up. I it took a while, but I got the answer that he said he asked the traffic department, and the traffic department said they have not been involved in any discussion on any future development. And the size of the development would dictate if traffic would be involved with a study. Community members really want to know a traffic study would be happening. Want to know that. And then the other question that we all received in an email but didn't have a public opportunity to bring it up was a community member asked us about the solid waste services and the transfer station. So I followed up with that and spoke with Kelly Toth, which is the she's still the Acting Director of Solid Waste Services and has three other titles that she's still fulfilling, but is ready. She's ready to start that conversation. So we can have further discussions.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, move on to item number seven, committee updates to G B O S. If any of our committees wish to say anything, I'll start with Matt and then move on to Tommy. Matt, do you want to come up?
Yeah, Matt Schacter, Co-Chair, Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. We will have a working session on Thursday, this Thursday at noon time. It's going to be a very narrowly focused discussion on starting to build short term rental regulations and kind of looking at what Girdwood may would want may like to start doing and kind of benchmarking against what the municipality of Anchorage proposal was, but it's kind of a very narrow focused discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. And then the regular meeting is beginning.
The first is July first.
Thank you. Tommy, do you come up?
My name is Tommy O'Malley. This is a report on the progress towards cemeteries in Anchorage. The Director of the Anchorage Cemetery is going to be calling a meeting in July, about the middle of July. And at that meeting, the city will be invited, also the representative from the State Department of Health and Human Services or something. Those people, that person is the one that's responsible for paying for funerals of people who die who are indigent that can't pay for their own funerals. That would be like the twenty three people that died in the cold past winter that they were homeless. Up till now, they have just been paying for burial service and not the plot. But now the Anchorage Cemetery is completely full, and they will be required to spend between six and nine thousand dollars for burial plots from a private the private cemetery. So the cost of to the state is going to go way up for burying Indian people, and that's about sixty a year. The basic idea is to say it's nice that there's been a grassroots effort to get cemeteries together. But it's the been the city's responsibility to run a cemetery and provide services. And what is the city going to do about that? It's going to be putting it on on the city. Maybe this project Anchorage might be a funding source for that, because I don't know of any other thing that's going on here in Girdwood that we could spend money on. I don't know. All right. So anyway, that meeting will be in the middle of July, and it'll be in the Anchorage Municipalities Court. We are expecting, because Suzanne LaFrance has been supportive of this cemetery idea for many years, that we'll have some movement on it. Any question?
Thank you. Okay, I had I did notice there was a, I think, an R F P came out today from Heritage Land Bank about a potential cemetery in South Anchorage.
Oh, God.
If you saw anything about that. I think that's in that's not the natural burial, I think.
That's a and I can speak to that. It's a cemetery that's on, I think, seven acres, and the capacity is for thirty years at the burial rate that they're projecting. It's a private nonprofit organization that's doing it. An issue is that there are laws, there are federal laws about perpetuity. That is that once you start a cemetery, it has to be there forever. Somebody has to take care of it. It'll be on that private nonprofit organization to put enough money in escrow to maintain that cemetery forever, after only thirty years of service. The reason that we went with the municipality is because governments last a long time. Private nonprofit organizations come and go with people who are interested. Rotary Clubs, there's always been a road, the people change, and their goals and aspirations change. We would be offering green burials here in Girdwood when that happens. So I think it's a it's not a a cure or an answer to the question. I think there are some real problems when it's get looked at.
I think I think this R F P may have been separate from the natural burial.
I don't think so. I've talked with I've talked with Emma Gibbony about that.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, you had a question. Do you want to just speak up front?
I was just wondering, Tommy, you know, you've been working towards this, I heard you say one time, for twenty four years.
Yes.
For us to just have a cemetery in Girdwood. And so I was wondering, you know, and I have a friend now that I know she wants a place for her mother, you know. And and so what can we in the in the community? I've seen you try to bring this forward and and then see it go backwards. What can we do to help?
The bricks. The Brooks Chandler did an analysis of voting on the Proposition Seven to fund this. The, the proposition passed overwhelmingly in Girdwood, up at eighty percent. It passed at every precinct in Anchorage. In Eagle River, it was voted down in every precinct, not just by fifty-three to forty-five, like seventy percent. People voted negatively on it, and that's what caused the cemetery to fail. I think we're, we're doing, we've already put a hundred thousand dollars and maybe more into the study. We're ready to go. One idea is that the city has a GPS mapping program that they they use drones or outer space or something. We could grid an area in a couple of days. And then those grid an area for cremains to be put in. And then they'd be registered. That place, somebody could put their grandmother's cremains in the ground, it'd be pinned. And we could do that. The Assembly would have to transfer the land management from Heritage Land Bank to the cemetery, but it wouldn't cost. We wouldn't have a parking lot. We wouldn't have other things, but I know people that have their loved ones cremains on a mantle or in a closet. Somebody bought a house, somebody's grandmother's ashes were in the basement. I mean, it's nice to have a place to put them. And it could be easily done. So a proposal will make a little city of I think we've done a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No further questions, we'll move on to item number eight. If you could do it really quickly, Tommy, yeah?
Sure. I'm a member, maybe the owner of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. We have seen in America a real problem, maybe not caused by the death by police of George Floyd. But certainly it has resounded. And during this time in the last ten years or less, we've seen calls to defund police. We've seen violence against citizenry by the police. Here in Girdwood, where we spend about more than two and a half million for public safety, for fire department and for the police, we have a, a good thing going. We have a really good relationship with the Police Department. And I mean by we, the people here have a good relationship. And we are paying for them. And I think it's really important that we maintain a citizen connection with our Police Department, and that would be the Public Safety Advisory Committee, so that it's not just municipal attorneys doing the contract or municipal employees talking to the police, but that people talk to the police. And there's that liaison with the public. We're paying a lot of money. And it's really important. We can see what goes wrong when we don't have a good connection, a, a community connection to our Police Department. And I hope that stays in place in some way. I don't know.
Thank you. We will move on now to item number eight. Status of Proposed Girdwood Developments. There's an updated table in the packet just with details. I think the main things that have happened since our last meeting. The Aliaska Village Proposal from the Resort, their Area Master Plan and Phase One Development Master Plan were both approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's many more things to be done in later phases, but the Phase One, I think, is, is effectively gone through in the municipal process now. We heard earlier a little bit of an update on the Girdwood Airport Lodge Proposal. And, and we also heard there isn't an update on NSTAR. And I think the other things to mention are thirty-nine South Townhouses were approved by Planning and Zoning. And I think there's still potentially some movement or maybe not movement on the, on the consultant position at H L B for Holton Hills. We'll find that out in the next week or so. I think that's it. Unless there's any questions on the those development proposals? Okay, in that case, we can move on to number nine, which is Service Provider Reports. Start with Chief Weston.
Hi there. I, I put up, there's a, I think a graphic you can put up if it's not already up. Uh, so the good news is Wildfire Mitigation Day on Saturday was super successful. We had seven, four dump truck loads of chips. Electric was overwhelmed and amazed with how many residents were coming out and one flatbed of animal browse that went to the Wildlife Center. So huge thank you to Chi Gatch Electric, State Forestry, Girdwood Cert, that was Chase that was there, and Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center. We have fifteen firefighters testing for firefighter one and hazmat operations this weekend. And firefighter one is the first entry into doing, going interior on, in structure fires. So they're all learning sort of foundational skills. So if you know somebody that's testing, they've worked really hard. It's, they've worked it since February on this every weekend, sometimes twice a weekend, and so super proud of them all. So hopefully everybody's going to pass. And as well as that, you know, you probably drove by it today. You'll see outside, we have a, the burn trailer. And that's, we borrow that every year for a couple, for a couple of weeks from Department of Public Safety, so we're able to practice some more burn training. And then we additionally have had one of the AFD Academy Trainer Advisors and a former Girdwood Fire Member in the firehouse doing monthly sort of firefighter skills workshops. And so that's worked really well. So we, the department's made a lot of, you know, we are, our focus this year was on workforce development and we've made, I think, incredible progress. And that's all thanks to the dedication of our firefighters. We have a water and mud rescue equipment and training silent auction that'll be online. I was hoping it was going to be today, but unfortunately I spent the day moving vehicles. And so it will be on bidding owl, and I'm hoping I'll have that up and running tomorrow. We still have two, we're still in the two medic reserves as ours are giving refurbished. They don't have working air conditioning, so it's a little toasty in there, but we should all remember it's okay when we think of the cold of this winter. We have a new board member, Cara Edwards. The tsunami signage, we've been told by the municipality, hasn't come until fall. And then we just received notice two days ago that we received a seventeen thousand grant, dollar grant from M S R, which is the Food and Rescue Association for Rams Class. And that's, that's basically to confirm that when we do backcountry rescues, we're doing it. And then I have the stats over there in between the firefighter one class. May, May was quiet, other than we had the suspicious fires. That was that one day where we had some people doing three nefarious activities at three locations in Girdwood. And one community member lost their home. Meaning, which, you know, homes can come in many shapes and sizes. Homes could be a vehicle, homes could be a tent or a structure. So somebody did lose their home during that nefarious activity, and that is under, still under investigation by Whittier Police. Maybe they'll give an update when they come on next. The fire out on arrival was a barbecue fire. Smoke in the area was the weird smoke or the weird cloud formation above the mountain. And rec evaluation is anytime people are out on the mud flats and we have to go and look at, see what they're doing on the mud flat. For June, we've had one vehicle, so June has been super busy. We're at thirty, around, we're almost at thirty. I think we are at thirty incidents. And that's usually what a normal month is. So we're at thirty incidents right now. One vehicle fire, twenty EMS, two vehicle accidents, one with a, one had a fatality in there. Two water rescues, which they weren't serious rescue, but they were still, you know, water rescues. And then we had sit in Whittier EMS three times with the cruise ship patients. Any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Okay, none from here. Anything, I'm not seeing any questions in the room or online. Thank you very much, Chief Weston.
Sorry, just real quickly, Chief Weston, I just wanted to say it was great to see the material laid out like this. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks. And I tried to come home to be outside, but you know, there's too many bugs. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Chief Ashay online.
I did speak with Chief Ashay today. He had a prior commitment tonight, so he couldn't attend, but we did do a quick briefing and they are fully staffed. They are right now in preparations for Forest Fair. And all staff will be working that weekend. They do have Officer Mark Hager, who is leaving to take a position down in Oregon after the, after the Forest Fair. And so they are currently actively looking to hire a new officer. They just hired an officer in the last couple of months and he is about to finish his training and is working on the streets now. So so they, they are in a busy time of year now. Whittier has picked up with activity with the boating season over there and then the cruise ships. And so they're balancing the needs of both communities, but doing a job keeping up with it. They are actively investigating several investigations, but at this point, those investigations are still open, so no details to share. And at the same time, also doing daily service calls as they come up. And Chief Ashay did share with us an updated Activities Report or Statistics for the month. So we're up to date through May. And you can see the different calls that they are dealing with. And as you can see, the uptick in May and, and with more people around, they tend to see more things happening. So those are the different things going on out there.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, from the community? Thank you very much. So let's move on to the Parks and Rec and Roads.
We are very busy with Parks and Rec as the summer has hit and several projects going on out there. And our crew has been really, really wonderful tackling a lot of them. Really, the spring had us dealing with a lot of the damage from the winter, from graffiti to natural damage to repairs on different things. And so they've spent the last month really just getting things back in shape for the summer and doing repairs along those lines. And then they have been out on the trails. We've been dealing with a lot of windfall. Actually, a huge wind event two weekends ago that took down quite a few trees. And so they're out dealing with that. And then they're dealing with all winter windfall. So they've been out there and they will try to do some trail work this week. They are going to try to start some brushing on Beaver Pond as we can fit it in. At the same time, like today, they're out sealing the cracks on the tennis court. And then over in Town Square, repairing fence rail and things like that. So we appreciate John and Luke for being out there and just keeping on top of everything and getting things up and going for us. Trails Committee held a great work party last month instead of doing a meeting and we finished up with the demo of the old bridge on the Beaver Pond. This winter, a new bridge was built during the hard winter. And the old bridge was taken out and then revetched the whole area through there. So we appreciate everybody who came out and partook in that. It's a small group, but they were very efficient and we got a lot done in that period out there. Quick update on the Winter Creek Bridge. We have started the final phase of design and had a project meeting last week and our engineer group, Ree Milton, is moving forward and, and we should start to see substantial progress as early as next month. And our goal still is to have it completed and hopefully out for bid by late two thousand four, early two thousand twenty-five. So, so we're working through that. We do want to thank Aliaska Resort. They are actually doing a fundraising for us over the next week here. They have a solstice event up on the Sun Deck this Thursday, June twentieth, from six to nine PM at the top of the tram. And they will be collecting donations to ride the tram, you give a donation and it'll be dedicated to the bridge. And then they have a bike, bike park opening, ground opening this Saturday, and they'll be as well collecting donations there. They'll go towards the bridge. So we appreciate them reaching out to us and offering that. We hope that we might be able to get some volunteers from Girdwood Trails, maybe be there and represent the trail or the bridge project, but we'll see how that, that works out. But we do appreciate Aliaska's support there. And as always, we're working through a list of projects this time of year. And I do want to give a big thanks to Margaret for all the coordination of the flower and beautification out there. All the new flowers went in the last week and they look wonderful and, and they're off and running for the year. And we have several grants open and, but that, more details within our report about that. Let's switch over to the roads real quick. We have completed the spring work with spring grading and applying calcium chloride to all roads has been completed. We do recognize that some of the calcium has worn off and we had those heavy rains after we completed the project. So we do have it slated to hopefully get back out there soon and reapply that. We just have to work it with the scheduled contractor. And then all the sweeping and picking up of winter debris has been completed as well. We did clean all our storm drains. A two-year project that we do. And so we just spent all last week going through about ninety storm drains and pipes and had them all vacuumed. And quite a bit of material came out, but they should be all actually, after inspection, they look in great shape. So, so we're ready for another two years of collecting in those storm drain systems. And then the M O A Paint Shop will be out soon to paint all traffic lines on M O A roads as their schedule allows. We are working through with AWU on the Ruann Fish Culvert Project. We are applying to the EPA for the funding, and so we're going through that process, which has been consuming. But we're getting through it at this point in time. So we'll hope to see some progress on that by midsummer and, and move forward, move into design phase once the funding is secured this fall. And then the new Fish Culvert for Davos Road at Aliaska Creek, it's currently out for construction bid. And we will see the bid opening on June twenty-eighth. And so depending on how those results are, the goal is to complete that project this summer, early fall and get that project going. So, so that's on the street finally. Appreciate everybody's effort to get that done. As always, our budgets are where they are this time of year. Actually, between this report and, and when we published it, I did get two more invoices and those invoices were for April, May for the, for the contractor, but we are about fifty percent spent for our budgets this year and and that goes across the board for parks, police and fire. So budgeting looks real good about this time of year. So any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? From the community? Thank you very much indeed, Kyle. We just mentioned from the subject presentation, there is some additional material in the packets about DOT projects on the Sewer Highway. Anyone wishes to peruse that? We will now move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment, state full name and address, public comments limited to three minutes per person. Subject not on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kai Holland and this is board and the rest of you. I'm a candidate for House District Nine. And I wanted to come by tonight just to introduce myself. I'm an independent. This is a district that, you know, Latty Shaw has been in and is not running. And I'm looking forward to learning more about the issues. I grew up in Anchorage. I live in the Rabbit Creek area. And I've been very involved in the Rabbit Creek and most of the hillside related infrastructure issues for many years. My background is in industrial engineering and manufacturing. I've been involved in some of the sewer projects down here in Girdwood in the past. But I've spent most of my time in the last few years working in the area of innovation and entrepreneurship and business development. And then in our community, working a lot on the wildfire concerns and in particular the egress challenges of our many isolated neighborhoods that have one way in and one way out. So I'm looking forward to getting to know of people better in this area. I'll be out knocking on doors and looking forward to learning more about the concerns and the issues that I might be able to represent in your area. So thank you for giving me just a couple of minutes to say hello again, Kai Holland. I look forward to meeting you and answering any questions and learning what I can about what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. Willem online?
Yeah, hi there. I just wanted to note the, the recent announcement of our partnership with the, with the Y M C A for the REC Center within the first phase of the development. The Y M C A and, and Aliaska have, we, we basically want to start a building committee for this as we work through the process. And it's important for the Y to keep the community involved. So within the next few weeks, we're hoping to kind of start an application process for the, the building committee, just to keep a couple of community members involved if people are interested. So just wanted to kind of put that out there. And I think during the next G Boss meeting or L U C meeting, the Y M C A will, will want to come out and just, you know, present. themselves to the community and meet with everyone here. And, you know, community input is is very important as well as it is for us. So just wanted to, yeah, put that out there.
Thank you. We'll so we'll hear from the, we'll hear from the Y next month, one of our meetings.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other public comment? Okay, so we'll move on to old business item number 10, Agenda Item LUC 240304. Imagine Girdwood Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, P&amp;Z Meeting on July the 15th. I have to recuse myself for this as I have done in previous meetings, so I will hand over the chair to my fellow co-chair and Sydney Orville.
Thank you. All right, there are three of us here to discuss number 10. So if anyone would like to make a motion for this old business item. It's right here in front of us.
I would like to make a motion that we put together resolution of support for the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan as presented tonight.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion on this resolution? Looks very similar to the one previous. So I think it's the same. Based on all of the comments and discussion we've had in the past, this is something we're very much in support of as a body and community. Anyone like to say anything else? I'll check over for a second.
I would have a question for for Mike if I may. Mike, you you made a comment at the at the Land Use Committee that there that there may be some some challenges with how well planning and zoning receives this the comprehensive plan. Are you confident that it's, we're going to get a a good hearing and that this and that this resolution of support is going to be well received?
I'm optimistic, yes. I think there's always comprehensive plans that come along every week. So I think there's always, you know, there's a lot of material in there and they may well have some technical questions and technical concerns, but we should see the staff report in about I think it's about two weeks. So that will be published on the City Portal website. So I look forward to seeing that. And then obviously, they will be giving a presentation of staff verbally at July 15th meeting, which I know is actually the same night as the GBOS meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Kyle, if we have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Windguard?
Yes.
Motion pass of 3-0.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for that and all the work on writing the resolution as well. On number 11, Mike, you can have the chair back for our Forest Fair permitting.
Yeah, and I can give update on this. We are pretty much there. We're just waiting on other departments like the alcohol beverage control to process their permit, the right of way for municipality to process and Anchorage Fire Department to process the operation permit. So they've been very active about getting, so they have to go through and get approvals from all these different departments that are underneath them. So we've been seeing a lot of action here in the last four days. So so we hope to see that, but Forest Fair has turned everything in. The punch list, you know, punch list is about 20 items and they've collected 16 of them. So we're just waiting on the last ones. It's typical this type of year, they they, these departments agencies don't process until you get close to the bin. So so we'll see those hopefully within the next week. Everything's on track to do it.
Thank you. Let's see, any questions? So we'll move on to item 12, GBSA Housing Goal Project Status Update. Jane, Jennifer, me. I don't have any specific update on this. We put together project goals and we have an item later on in new business that we can probably merge with this and talk about next steps on a plan. Do you have any update? Okay. If there are no questions on that, we will go to item number 13, Municipal Room Tax Update. I think last time I mentioned that there was a resolution had come out of the Budget Advisory Commission request or basically proposing, or at least asking the Assembly to consider using short-term rental room tax to help mitigate the impact of short-term rentals. That got presented to the Assembly. The general feedback was that there is a broader discussion happening in the late summer fall about revenues overall. I suspect also tied into the sales tax discussion we heard earlier. So I think this is still on the table, but there's no immediate action we're going to see in the next few weeks. Again, do you have, do you have any further updates on that? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mike, when is the next Budget Advisory Commission meeting? Is there one in June or July?
I should know. I believe it's this later this week. I will confirm and get back to you on that. Thank you.
I don't know if it's once a month or?
Yes, generally once a month. Item number 14, Agenda Item LUC 2403-05, Status Update on Request for Text Men for GC2. We have a, Jennifer, I have an action to to put together some language. We did, I did get a clarification from the Planning Department, or at least a manager in the Planning Department or the Director, that we should be able to initiate that ourselves. So we have to just finalize the letter and okay between the two of us to send to the Planning Director to start that process. We will do that in the next couple of weeks, week or two, I should say. Hopefully, we'll have an update with action by Land Use next month. Again, is there anything, anything you wanted to add to that? Okay, so our three, our three items together. Okay, any questions on that? Well, no. Yeah.
I'm hard to hear you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so you said that you were pushing it to planning.
So, yeah, we got clarification. We used to have a this also ties with other stuff that's been going on the Assembly. How items changes to Title 21 get initiated has been kind of a bit complex. And we have had problems in the past when we've tried to initiate items and we've been basically told we can't because we're acting as a community council most of the time. Last year, when we passed Proposition 7, which gave us the power of housing and economic development, that changed our status. So now the sense is that we can initiate things directly because we're part of the, it's one of our active powers. So I got some at least general clarification on that. So what we're actually going to do is initiate that process by sending a letter with ordinance-like language, which we've already discussed and agreed to in principle.
So the next action item is to write a letter?
Yeah, so Jennifer and I have to both review that, prove it, and then we should be able to get that sent through. I don't think unless you you think we should bring that to the body for approval. I think we've already, we've already agreed to this in principle, so this should be fine. Yeah, so we'll send that, we'll send that and have an update for Land Use next month.
And I just want to be clear, the verbiage finalized then, so like you mentioned in the Land Use meeting last week, that there was potentially a verbiage change. Is it going to be what we have seen last?
No, I think what we thought, I think what I said is we just have to make sure that you can't generally propose changes to code for a single parcel. Well, I mean, there are types of zoning you can, but in general, what we're doing here is we're we're rationalizing GC2 with all the other parts of the other commercial areas and making it more aligned with the with our with our comprehensive plan that hopefully will be a step further by the time this comes in front of planning and zoning. So we just, we would just want to make sure that this is stated appropriately generally and not too specific to a single project or a single concept.
Understood. I just, there is a verbiage change and we have seen it last, just because last, I must say, obligations.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? If not, we'll move to number 15, Discuss Levees in Girdwood, California Creek. With the California Creek Levy Protecting Town Center and the Glacier Creek, California Creek Turnigan Arm Levy protecting Old Girdwood. So this is under Supervisor Windguard's.
Right, well, I haven't been spearheading this project, but we've heard a number of presentations about it, both Land Use and previously at GBOS. But really, the expert on this one is Amanda. This is, you've just done an extraordinary amount of research on this. So I feel like Amanda, if you don't mind, I'm going to toss this to you. Try to recap your words from Land Use.
So Amanda Huddle here. So really, there hasn't been a huge bunch of any development anyway that I am aware of other than with the levy, particularly the Old Girdwood Levy. Other than in the last Heritage Land Bank meeting last month, Heritage Land Bank, I'm unsure of her title, but the one meeting, said that she'd been in discussion with the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers has admitted to the development of the Girdwood Levy. So that was an interesting take. They admit that the Army Corps of Engineers, after the 64 earthquake, came through and did a bunch of work from here down the peninsula. It was massively done. A lot of it was not well documented. A lot of the history of that Old Girdwood area is only done in photos, which is how that was brought to light, that the levy was the owner, the last rail road was, you can tell me some pictures. So anyways, I have not had any further correspondence, but according to HLB, Army Corps of Engineers has committed building the levy, which is wonderful news for us.
Thank you.
I can give an update on the, yeah, I was gonna say, can you, so I've been actively pursuing that with ASD. Got little communication back from them. So I'm just basically keep bumping up the line until I find somebody who will respond. Sometimes summer is a bit of a struggle, but people I've been trying to reach out to are year round. So so we'll continue to push that since it is on their property. Before we jump into it, it's creates an interesting scenario for the community since it is on their property, how we deal with that. So we'll hopefully have some more answers here. Plan to pursue it again tomorrow, just to see what I can get response from somebody.
Is the, is the whole of the levy on their property or is the bit, is some of it on HLB? Because I think the area behind some of Creekside and the new development.
The bit that's eroding is on their property.
Okay, got it.
But it does cross several ownerships. It does go through MOA right of way, which there's a right of way that goes back behind next to Creekside Apartments and then there is HLB land from there. But the the levy itself peters out at the bridge that crosses from Town Square to Coe Creek Road. Kind of natural flow.
Thank you. Mike, so thank you, Kyle and Amanda, for, like, I know these are both on the same agenda item, but I feel like they're two separate topics in a way. Could, and the answer could be for both of these. Could GBOS write a letter very soon or should we wait another month for the research to be done on either end to the landowners? I know that's not about all one landowner, but.
I I mean, from the California Creek perspective, if I can't get any response from ASD, it may become more of a political warrant that we have to use to get some action. But I'm hoping that we can find somebody there and find it out. I know they're going to be hands off about it because they're just like, well, we own the land, but doesn't mean we actively control water management. So so it'll be, so it always comes down to is who's going to fund it, right? And so in the end, so that that's what will have to be figured out.
Did you have any questions? There you should go.
Well, actually, Mike's quite inspiring, Amanda. So right now, there's no action that you're seeing.
Apparently, there is no action. Okay.
I actually have a question. So in your judgment, I know there is quite a lot of erosion happening on the area sort of towards the school. Why would you put this in terms of priority? Is this something that we can just, you know, we can leave for a while or is it something we should perhaps initiate?
No, I think it's something we have to initiate. I feel like we need to keep moving on it. You know, one good flood could cause more erosion and then you're just, you're dealing with more of that issue. So so I think it's something we need. We really need a partnership of the school district to get involved and say, yes, it's our, it's our land above the medium high water. Below the medium high water, it's really state and federal land, you know, getting a national, getting a nationwide permits there at the core. And so we just need to have a partnership with them because all access and everything will have to go across ASD land to access the project and make it work. So.
Is is the initial issue work needing to be done or is it assessment of where things stand?
I think the initial thing would be an assessment of what needs to happen. And then you have to take an assessment and figure out, does this fall within the service area's responsibility to maintain?
Right.
If it doesn't, then what area, what funding source does this come from?
Right.
There's no road directly tied to it. And so, you know, you could maybe qualify it under a drainage program, but usually all our drainages are associated with our roads. And so when we do improvements associated with roads, our drainage is directly tied to a road facility. So in this case, it's not. So it's, it's a very interesting gray area to figure out. You know, like I said, where does the money come from to do anything?
I mean, my sense is the first thing is we should, if, again, my trust your judgment is whether we should do this now or wait until next month, but I think we should probably author someone, author something and actually have a beginning formal communication with the school district and HLB at least.
I think it's key to find out who the person we're talking to. Okay, we can always go to the superintendent, whatever, if we can find somebody that's more, who's going to assign to.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll just add that I'm happy to work on something before July or in July. June is fine with me.
Well, I guess you, what's the sense of the body? Should we do something now and have Brianna look at that between now and next meeting? Or should we wait until the next meeting to take formal action then?
You do have a work session on July 9th, so if you wanted to meet too, we could use that session as well, too. We always change it to a work special meeting. We can always do something at that point in time. And we actually have a meeting with the municipality.
Yeah. But, uh.
I was also thinking too that Amanda, I'm here, that some of these concerns too could be addressed. I know we've spoken on the meetings the lack of the water fed data here for the entire Girdwood Valley. There's been discussions about initiating that. Maybe this would be a great place where we can initiate, this is just a current thought rolling off the top of my head here. This is where we can initiate that water use study, that water discharge study for the valley. Like we said, road design needs to be taken into consideration to understand what the hydrology actually is.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not sensing a desire for the body to to do something immediately on this. So I think we will push it to. We probably will have a, think about it as chairs and maybe put it on the, put it on the agenda for our work sessions, right? Is to discuss, even if we don't act on it. Okay, item number 16, Bike Wood. Bike Wood Request with GTC Recommendation for a GBOS Resolution of Support for Phase Two of the Bike Trail. Supervisor Burnett.
All right, I'd like to start off by thanking Dan and Margaret for working, for putting this resolution of support copy together for the for the trails tonight. It's, we've seen the plan work its way through Girdwood Trails Committee, Land Use Committee and now here and hopefully with with this trifecta of of support, get these guys mobilized and and working in the field and also hopefully get them able to not have to go in front of UDC as they're, as they're working to build the new trails, the Phase Two.
Thank you. Would you like to come and say anything, Ben?
Yeah, this is quick. Thanks for letting me come through. I think there's six meetings now. I feel like I've repeated myself a lot. Also, the courses of the committees, but yeah, we're excited to get back out there and it seems like the whole community is pretty excited about it, too. So making progress with HLB, I think. When we can get this done and through the Assembly and then finalize. When we can get this done and through the assembly and then finalize the easements for the existing trails, which are gonna happen in the next month or two, they're being surveyed next week. So we're getting closer to being ready to, to build more of them. So thanks.
Can I just ask a quick question about the surveying? Is that, is that a fairly expensive proposition?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty expensive. It's always a tough one. You know, this has come up a few times about parks and rec. Or, you know, us not being in a park there. If you build a trail on a park like the hillside or Kincaid, then no easements or surveys really need to happen in the park. So it's been a tough one. We, we went through it with, we haven't wrapped it up. We've surveyed the first trail that we built, Small House, a couple of years ago, and now we're doing the other ones. But the short answer is, it is expensive. We have tried to resist it, but we haven't succeeded in being able to.
How does that kind of compare in terms of cost to actually building the trail? And is it similar or?
Yeah, oh, let's see, it's probably, I mean, it's maybe ten percent of building the trail. It's, it's not exorbitant, but it's still, you know, thousands of dollars for us as, you know, and the budget is already tough just for the, for mountain bike club to build trails. So to, to come up with another four or five grand to survey them is, is great, but.
Right, so we should think about it like adding ten or fifteen percent onto the cost.
Yeah, yeah, probably about that.
And that's primarily because it's H L B land and they want to know exactly where the boundary is so they can.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any questions from the board? Actually, I should formally have a motion to adopt this resolution. Would anyone like to move that?
I'll move that we approve resolution to twenty twenty four dash zero six for the construction of Bike Wood Phase Two trails.
Thank you, Brianna. Do you have a second? You have to take that second.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, any further comments on this? Looking forward to voting yes. So on that, let's go to a roll call vote.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Senator Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five, four, zero.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Bike Wood. Okay, move on to item seventeen, filling of the G H E C vacancy. I will ask for an update from Margaret.
So we had one formal application, as I've let the supervisor who oversees G H E C know. And then that was it that we received. That was a formal application. We did have a lot of interest expressed by another member of the community who does not meet the requirements of the G H E C as they currently exist. So we can talk about that more directly if you want.
Okay. Well, I think as we, as we currently have, we haven't gone through the process of changing all up rules and procedures and, and, you know, requesting changes to committee structures. So I think we have to, we have to work where we are. I guess the question is for the body, should we, should we move forwards and, and appoint applicant? Or should we, should we set something up as a future action? That we could perhaps include this in our July the ninth meeting?
Do we, excuse me, do we know if the current applicant is a long term renter?
I believe we do know that the current applicant is a long term rental. So that was a, I know the person who resigned was fulfilling that one, so that's definitely a huge advantage.
Oh, this is Brianna. I would just say my first thought is to invite the applicant to start because they have interest now and there's meetings now. And other people are still welcome to join the discussion and be at the meetings. And that still might happen. And we can hopefully take that as a reminder to update our rules and procedures really soon, since that was a twenty twenty four goal.
Okay. Yep. Normally, we would have the, I think we'd have the applicant listed and some background in the packet. And I'm afraid I dropped the ball on that, so we don't.
I didn't know what we wanted to do with, not exactly. So it doesn't need to remain mysterious at all. That's not my intent. So anyway, I would say that it is Lisa Miles who has put her name in the hat. And so, yes, I think the committee is all familiar with her and her various qualifications and circumstances that she's spoken of on several occasions here, so it happens to be her.
To reiterate, was in that email, you know, is that in, in the seven years that I've lived here in Girdwood, and I have experienced some period of time of a little bit of homelessness. Remember that? And, and a lot of uncertainty, you know, with my housing and everything. And I do work here, several jobs, and I've been on or created three nonprofits in our community, and I'm heavily invested. I care about the environment. I care about housing. I care about people. I care about kids. Everything that we need here. And, and when it comes to every single one of these issues, I find that there's, I'm a little bit on both sides of it. You know, it's, it's not like, like, some people are kind of like, well, I only have this viewpoint or that viewpoint. But I will, I find oftentimes that because of where I'm at in, in the various things that I'm doing in life, I understand from a couple of different sides of things. So that's, that's why I wanted to be involved in Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee since before it was founded.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to appoint Lisa Miles to the vacancy. If anyone wishes to make that motion.
I move, this is Brianna, to appoint Lisa Miles to G H E C.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'd second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing any? I think we can move to a vote. Shall we do this as a roll call?
Sure. Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Senator Wingard? That motion passes four, zero.
Thank you. And congratulations, I think. Item number eighteen, GBOS rules and procedures update. This is for everybody. Going to, I know Brianna has some thoughts on this, so I'm going to start this discussion.
Thank you. This has been looming on my mind since I started drafting some ideas a couple of months ago. And I would like to continue working on this, but I have no suggested edits tonight. But I'd be happy to work on this before another work session, so that we could all contribute and then put forward any and all ideas, so that it can have a comment period or the, the notice that's required before it's adopted.
And just to remind everyone, the, the process we have to follow here is we can, we can propose a set of changes, but then they have to go to a, there has to be, I think, a thirty day posting period publicly before we can actually vote and adopt you. So I think the, I think the idea of having a, I think we're gonna have to have a work session on this. We will probably have to have a work session to discuss the items. Vote to either just accept as a body that we're going to go forwards or vote to propose them as a set of changes and then go to the formal adoption after a public call period. So I think this is probably likely to be another work session. Which we should set is July unrealistic.
I would say late July, like chips. Might be, but August might be better.
Okay. So maybe we can schedule something in early August to have a work session on the, on a set of changes.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a, we'll have a group discussion there, or we could do it as a special meeting. We'll, we'll liaise on that, but early August timescale.
So in the meantime, is Brianna going to work with somebody else on proposing changes?
Yes.
Or on changes to be proposed at work session?
Who would like to work on this?
I think it's kind of a, I'm, I'm definitely interested in doing it. Sort of does fall in the responsibilities of chairs. So I think if we go, if we go ahead and come up with a set of proposals.
Okay.
Based on all the feedback we had and all the things that were discussed at the, at the previous discussion about the, the issues we need to resolve.
Right. Now is a great discussion. So I think we, we definitely know where to go.
Okay. Let me know if you need help or space to meet or whatever.
We will, we will definitely share a draft with you. Okay, so now we can move on to new business. Oh, sure. P S A structure, yes. Yeah, so did, did you want to actually say something, Tommy? Or do you want to just address that P S A is, P S A was the second part of this? So we still have a pending question about P S A, whether we, you know, what we do with P S A is it to remain the same structure, et cetera. That is going to be part of the broader question, but we have a pressing issue. It's on hiatus at the moment. Do we continue it on hiatus? Do we make, take some action now? Again, I'll leave it to comments from the board.
Well, Tommy, you and I have talked a fair amount about different options around this. And made a really good argument for continuing citizen involvement with our police force and, and also having a committee of some sort that can strengthen ties through the Whittier community as well. So one possibility, though, I, I mean, we have struggled with, all of us, I think, on, with this committee, sometimes struggling to find members and then also struggling to be like truly vital or seem truly vital. So one possibility was, and I thought you might be a Ben Maltu, was to switch it to less meetings left on, less active. So still have an active committee, but not necessarily trying to be every single month.
Well, we haven't met, and it hasn't been called to me in many, many months. As far as vitality, I've been approached by members four, five times in this past month with issues that they've had, that they haven't seen resolution for. But I think that a format or a process by which if somebody has a complaint, for example, I haven't, if they complained to Kyle, I haven't heard anything about it. But I have heard that there have been complaints, but they haven't been forwarded on to Public Safety Advisory Committee. The people that I've been contacted by, the issues are about the truck speeding on, and the buses, tour buses speeding on Alaska Highway, people that are operators know what speeding looks like. Michelle Weston, Chief Weston, had made that comment to me just today about that. The vitality also, I mean, maybe the public's impression is that the Public Safety Advisory Committee just deals with complaints or just deals with contracts. But a lot more things, like this, in this past month, I've been liaisoning with the Girdwood Forestry Committee to get signatures from our police chief that forward some of the paperwork that Kyle was talking about. Because I have a connection with the police department and I have Chief Ashay's number, it's easier for me to contact him. I've been contacted by the clinic that had questions about the abatement and why our police department was involved in a city action. Because we are outside the police service area. And so I was able to find out that our police department, it has an agreement to assist if needed. They didn't go in and move anybody, but they were there in case there was an incident.
So separate, separate from specific concerns, can I ask you about a couple of potential structures moving forward for P S A? And so let's, let's say, let's finding a way to continue moving forward. Another possibility is, you and I talked about at one point, was having a public safety liaison person. And the other possibility was moving these meetings quarterly.
Well, there, it's been a quarter since we've had a meeting, or once been called. Some also, if people are listening out there, we do, you know, it's hard to get people to run through GBOS sometimes. It's hard to get people to be on any committee.
Sorry.
I'm just saying.
No, I know.
Been there, done.
Yeah.
And so if anybody out there is concerned with public safety, and public safety means a lot, means protecting our children from cyberbullying. It means giving a voice to people who might be experiencing domestic violence. It's keeping a good relationship up with Whittier, our sister community, or with, in meeting our police at the events that the P S A committee holds. I urge you, if you're looking at me now, I do not look like a law and order politician, just in my tie dye, you know? But I have a, I have gained a real respect for our police. And I believe that a community involvement is why our police have such a successful reputation or positive reputation with, with our community. In my relation or interactions with Chief Ashay, I, every time I see him, I remind him that they are here to protect us. And they do, and they look out for us. Not so much enforcing the laws. I mean, they, they do that, too, but they're, they're here to stand in harm's way, and harm has come up. And I really think, I really, really think that we need to maintain a community connection with our police department. It's essential. And however that can happen, it should, like I said before, we're spending two and a half, more than two and a half million dollars a year on public safety. And with that kind of a price tag, if, if, that should afford a couple of meetings a year. I don't know if the housing committee draws any public funds, but I'm, you know.
Do we have a, is there a specific motion or?
Yes, I was gonna just.
Yeah, do you wanna go?
Permission of the chair. So it sounds like in the interest of being able to move forward with the committee and actually have meetings again, I would like to make a motion that we switch to quarterly meetings for P S A and that we work on getting people, sorry, filling our vacancies.
You know, you called for on the agenda, you called for members to join the
Actually, Tommy, we're just, we're.
I know, I know that.
A motion was just made and we want to hear if there's a second, and then we'll go into discussion, okay? Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, just so we have it going properly. Tommy, you had a comment?
There's a, it's an item on number seventeen that you called for as an action here to fill a committee vacancy for the housing committee. There's nothing in here, there hasn't been anything in here about calling for finding people for the P S A. And.
There's one question about, I thought we had, excuse me, I thought we had standing applications, actually.
We did recruitment and we did receive two applications, and at the same time, we went into this hiatus.
Good.
We could call it benign neglect instead of a hiatus.
But we could renew a call for, or check with the people that if they're currently interested in it, depending on what the board thinks, put out another call for applicants.
Yeah, I think we should, what we should probably do is we have a, we have a motion in front of us, so why don't we vote on that? And if we're going to, if we're going to bring it back and do it quarterly, then we obviously have to fill the vacancies. If we decide not to do that, then we don't. So unless there's, if there's any more discussion on the motion. So unless there's, if there's any more discussion on the motion.
My only discussion with the motion is very just minutia that if it can't have four in this calendar year, the idea is that there would be one soon. And there would be another one before the end of the year perhaps, but that there is one coming up soon.
There'd be probably one as soon as we can establish, as soon as we can point enough members.
Right.
Call them tap core.
Okay.
Right.
I'm finished with my comment.
Okay, any more comments? Saying any? So the motion in front of us is that uh, we uh, bring. We uh, we basically get PSEC to uh, meet approximately quarterly. It will start as soon as there are members appointed. So go to roll call.
Mike Ettington?
Sorry, first of all, does that have a correct statement? Okay, right. If the first and second agrees, that's what we vote again.
Mike Ettington?
Uh, yes.
Rhonda Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passed, supporter. Okay.
Okay, I have a question about number eighteen, says two new members and just, I, when I saw the agenda, I just assumed what that meant. Does that mean there are two applicants for private or no?
It's been some months.
Okay, so they're then made to.
There, I haven't spoken to anybody. We haven't had any further recruitment, so yes, it has been dormant.
Have actually briefed them about the process, the whole line? We haven't heard anything back from them, so we'll probably reach out to them again, but then we'll open it up for actual recruitment at the same time.
Okay, I think we should open it up, by sense.
Okay, and I received an email, but I told them to contact. That, I don't know if they did, so.
So we'll recruit for two weeks and then you'll have uh, slate names for your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Any other, any other questions on this issue or comments on this topic? Jennifer, let's go ahead.
Quickly, Tommy, I also wanted to thank you. I mean, I know your history with the police and incredible amount of work you did.
Uh, the statute of limitations upon most of those.
I'm in. I meant, thank you for finding such a great solution for me in this course, because I know that that was the.
You know, we call on the police when, when bad things happen and we were facing not having any police. Because our legislature had cut funds and people here voted. By three votes, it was very close, to have police here and uh, it's been proven to be pretty successful.
Thank you.
And necessary. Unfortunately, we have the same problems here as they do everywhere else. And and if you hire somebody with a gun, you should supervise them. Or you should have an input on who they shoot or not.
I think this is a, this is a challenge nationwide. Thank you very much, Tommy. We need to, we need to.
The challenge here.
Yeah.
By having.
We need to, we need to move on. We have other items on the agenda tonight. Thank you. Item nineteen on new business, housing implementation plan, uh, contract for uh, housing consultant. I can, can you take the chair for this item?
Sure.
Things to say at the beginning.
Yes.
Set structure.
Number nineteen, Mike.
Right, so um. Best practice, well, one of the things in the comprehensive plan is um, that we should have a housing implementation plan. Um, and this is a. This is something best practice in many other documents, many other, many other communities, sorry. To have a coordinated plan for the, for the things that need to be done. Um, I think we have. I think it would be advan, very advantageous for the community to have something that's clearly written down and uh. And produced by a professional with the right sort of expertise and skills. That sort of represents the next steps uh, for housing, because there's, it's a very complex subject. There's a lot of moving parts. Um, and while I respect all the work that we as individuals and uh, people on GHCC are doing, none of us have a professional background in it. We're all, we're all doing it from a. Um, from interest and what we can, what we can learn from it. Um, so. The idea here is to um, is to put out either an RFP or maybe even a sole source contract. We'll have to see what the options are. Um, and build from the work that was done in the comprehensive plan and finish that off and go into a housing implementation plan. So it basically prioritizes set a task, identify what can and can't be done here. Compares it to, you know, looks at what's worked elsewhere and what hasn't worked elsewhere and gives us kind of a clear roadmap. I think it's going to be a lot easier to argue our case. With the municipality and assembly if we have something that's got um, some significant professionalism. So we don't have to, we're obviously not acting on tonight, we're just introducing it. But that's the, that's the general concept. And we do have some budget uh, assigned to us from uh, in our twenty twenty four budget.
Any questions for Mike or comments? Before?
Anna, three? Uh, yes, so I'm curious, I didn't hear this discussed with the H E C, did I miss something?
I don't know, they've been aware of it since last year, so I don't think anyone's put it on their agenda. Because we had this discussion uh, last October when we, or last uh, August, September, when we put it on our, on our annual budget for twenty twenty four.
It seems to me like a uh, I I guess I'm confused, I'm sorry. Um, it seems to me like a, a natural thing for the committee to talk about, particularly in terms of. Uh, figuring out what, what we're looking for exactly and and hammering out. The terms of the RFP, that just seems like a natural thing to do through GHCC rather than on G boss.
I think it's a, it's, it's ultimately, it's G boss's responsibility. I think input from GHCC is always welcome and should be, they should have this on their agenda and should be discussing it. I think it's important that we introduce it here and when it comes to the RFP requirements, that's the decision we make as a body. We're responsible for the uh. Uh, for the expenditure of funds uh, within the service area.
Thank you for explaining that to me. After four years, I'm very clear on it. Excuse me.
Sorry, did you want to?
Excuse me.
Right, well, I was, sorry, I was just responding to your comment.
Okay.
Good.
Good. I'm a little uncomfortable with introducing things to G boss before they get introduced to GHCC. Like, this feels like it is very clearly under the GHCC umbrella. And so this is like introducing a train, change in trails without going through trails, or introducing a change that fundamentally affects our land use without going through land use. We're going to introduce this, I'm very clear on our ultimate responsibility, but it is just. Playing not only respectful but proper process to start this with GHCC and I'm uncomfortable with it being introduced. When we start this business, we're introducing new business here that is directly related to tasks we've asked GHCC to do. It seems to me completely process and um, the basic diplomacy issue. We should start this with GHCC. Before we're moving this into our own business and making decisions.
I, I hopefully, sorry to respond to that, I, that's okay.
Sure, there's just another question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I hope that we get uh, I hope that we get appropriate input from uh, GHCC to do this, but uh. I think it is completely acceptable for us, the body, to uh, to sort of introduce something and make sure it's on the agenda and on our, on our, on our road. And I look, I definitely look forward to having a dis, to that discussion happening at GHCC and I look forward to contributing to that discussion with GHCC as an observer.
You are, Matt.
So, yeah, I understand. I think, Margaret, for getting out of this. Business within GHCC. Appreciate it. Uh, the fact that it's being brought up here and give us like thirty seconds to find, like, just get confused with everybody, like, kind of. Fire, like, you know, there's no policy being decided. Um, at a very high level. Where, and I don't have an extract, I don't have an opinion, I don't have a. There's, there's kind of between the imagine river and plan, kind of what the resort wants to do, that ultimately what we're trying to do with housing, which kind of comes from the municipality. Angle, there's kind of like pieces to a puzzle that I'm not honestly sure I'm, know how to find fit yet, but they all have to work together. And that, they all, everybody has to have it worked together, um, in a way that I get, but the community part. So I don't, so I don't have to say, yes, we're going to be a consultant, but I acknowledge the fact that it's a complex puzzle and. We'll just bounce off the GHCC and we'll see where it actually takes us. So that's it, that's it.
And I mean, that's the whole point, is to, is to allow, enable us to uh, depending how we have to go through this process, if it's a. If it's a um, an RF, uh, it would be an RFP process, uh, that can be many months. So uh, this gets us onto your, this gets it onto our agenda and we can at least start moving eventually down that path.
Lisa?
Uh, now I have two questions. The, the first one was, Karen's Eva, didn't, I, I heard that you um. At one point in time were able to represent what projects the resort was doing to, were you on, were you that person, the liaison person at one point for the resort?
No.
Oh, okay. Have, have we had that in court past? Because I've heard you talk about that.
Not that I can, not that I can think of a specific liaison with GHCC or um, even with G boss or.
I had misunderstood, because I thought, I heard that that had been something that I just wanted to know how that went. Okay, okay.
Uh, did you have another question or no?
Yeah, I'm just.
Okay, it's okay.
Can I actually respond to this?
Um, the, I, I realize now there's potential ambiguity in how this is phrased. This is not resort in the sense of Alieska. It's got nothing to do directly with Alieska. Uh, it just means resort housing in the concept of the types of problems we have in a resort community are very different from the types of problems Anchorage has. Or Minneapolis has or Seattle has. We have similar types of problems to other, you know, outdoor recreation communities. That's what resort meant here. It's not about Alieska. The uh, the private company.
Okay, one more, Matt.
And I guess the way I, the way I think back to is, yes, so to the extent that we have a housing consultant, like, I guess, they won't, they're gonna be paying you some taxpayer money or something. Yes, it gets confusing about it. What's the value add and so on, just kind of, but, and I don't say that from a, from a skeptical perspective, I just say a question, I think, though. Right, I don't, so, so I almost view it, if we're, if we're talking about this, it's almost like, it's almost like a review process that has to go on, like, if we're, we're talking to multiple. So, trying to figure out what they can, do their experience can add value to the process in our community. And if there's somebody that we, the community feels or G boss feels can, can ultimately buy that value. You know, I, you know, continue, I continue to be on board, but, but I just don't know. So that's, that's how I'm just thinking.
It's going to be a very valuable conversation.
Yeah.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Go. The Chair back to you, Mike, if you're, with nineteen.
I've just finished with nineteen, there was no action requested until later. Yeah. Um, item twenty. General item L U C, twenty four oh, twenty four oh six oh four. Uh, request to pursue H L B municipal code requirement to initiate a land use study in the Gerwood Valley supervisor. Sorry.
Right, so this is another project that I have not spearheaded. Amanda has done the work on this, but this uh, is something that those of us who have looked at uh. H L B, it's possible requirements are, we're somewhat familiar with, and then also Amanda has also presented on this uh, at the last L U C meeting, right, as well. Uh, and so again, if that's all right, I'd like to just refer to her for uh, elucidation about this.
All right, Hannah Saddle here again. So, ultimately with this agenda item, um, I would like to request. Uh, government board supervisors uh, in the land use committee who have brought this up through the whole H L B compliant with municipal code. Uh, title twenty five forty point oh two five. Um, for the record, I am an environmental regulatory specialist. Um, I have done this professionally for sixteen years. I'm going to explain just at high level how the regulations of H L B work for those who are unfamiliar. There are two governing sets of policy codes that Heritage Land Bank is to be, to operate and be in compliance with. Uh, they are the English Comprehensive Plan and then the Anchorage Municipal Code. Anchorage Comprehensive Plan is more of a guiding policy that the board is to adhere to. It is very high level and it does not give specific requirements on how to be in climate, uh, to be in compliance with the plan. It is more so policy objectives that the board is to be guided by to meet the intent of. The Anchorage Municipal Code, Heritage Land Bank, has this, under the Anchorage Municipal Code, Heritage Land Bank has a specific set of codes that are explicitly for Heritage Land Bank. Uh, that is ta, uh, title twenty five, which is public lands, chapter forty, which is self titled Heritage Land Bank. Within chapter forty, there are eight subsections. Point oh two five is Heritage Land Bank disposals. Uh, within this code, it states verbatim, as you can read, the information in the comprehensive plan and the implementing measures is insufficient to determine whether disposal of a parcel or parcels is consistent with the plan or measures. Heritage Land Bank shall complete a site specific land use study. So the first thing in breaking down this code is to determine is if the information in the comprehensive plan and the implementing measures is insufficient. This is very easily proven, because the comprehensive, um, it's easy to prove the comprehensive plan and implementing measures are insufficient. As I stated, the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan is very high level. I still went through the entire document, which I um. Through, through the entire document. Policy number forty three, fifty one, fifty seven, sixty four, sixty eight, seventy and seventy seven. All highlight within the design and environmental policy section of the comprehensive plan that should be met and considered when conducting land disposals in the Gerwood Valley. None of these policies are being met for several reasons. Some of the programs have been defunded, like the English Coastal Management Plan. Or just complete lack of data, such as the hydrology and waterside management of our valley. Currently, the Anchorage Watershed Department does not have any hydrology data for the Gerwood Valley, other than a flow meter that is managed by USGS on the Alieska Highway Bridge. Two point two miles upstream of the valley called Gerwood. So from there, all the responsibility due to the English Comprehensive Plan and implementing measures obviously being insufficient. All responsibility to conduct environmental reviews before a land disposal falls onto Heritage Land Bank. Eight, there are only a total of nine reports that have been, that have been conducted in the Gerwood Valley. Eight of which can be summarized as reports that just determine the market value of the land to be sold. To date, there has never been one land use study conducted in the Gerwood Valley, which was, um, to date, there has only been one land use study which has been conducted in the Gerwood Valley. Which was published in two thousand and six, so this is eighteen years ago. It is the oldest document that Heritage Land Bank has posted on their website for Gerwood. Heritage Land Bank has passed uh, this last and very large land disposal in this community under a feasibility study that was completed in March of two thousand and seven. This is the report that Holton Hills and the hotel was disposed under, so a seventeen year old plan. Furthermore, neither one of these plans address the information required to meet title twenty five forty point oh two five C. Therefore, H L B is, is failing to meet municipal code. Now, as you can read, here's what the code states. It says each site specific, this is section C. Each site specific land use study shall address the need for community facilities, such as roads, parks, trails, schools. Satellite municipal offices, et cetera. B, identify historical and natural landmarks, natural hazards and environmentally sensitive lands. C, public utility needs, D, potential residential, commercial and industrial uses. And E, land use compatibility with adjacent areas, and F, consistency with land uses identified in the comprehensive plan in zoning area. The only land use study completed in this valley, the two thousand and six document, does not even have a project scope area that touches the Alieska Highway. In fact, out of all the studies, the furthest south a project scope area is, is Ruanda. None of the E reports of um, on the land or the land use studies mentions the existence of Old Gerwood. Which is noncompliant, which means that all of the one land use study noncompliant, the title twenty five forty point oh two five C. Uh, which is to identify historical and natural landmarks, natural hazards and environmentally sensitive lands. Additionally, had this had a land use study that met code been done to date, is important to know that. H L B, being the owner of the levees, would have been highlighted in these reports. However, I had to send Heritage Land Bank the land convenience documents from the Department of Natural Resources to prove to them that they were the owner on April twenty fifth. Um, I've tried several attempts to request and highlight the concern of land disposals in the Gerwood Valley by the Heritage Land Bank and the new land use study in this valley. I've written in comments to their work and management plan that was up for renewal. I wrote in five pages and uh, I have attended their meetings and written emails. During public testimony, there is no discussion or even questions from the board when I present on the subject. My emails have gone unanswered and even acknowledging that the email was received. Margaret, can I have you scroll down to the second supplemental piece that I submitted to you? Margaret, can I have you scroll down to the second supplemental piece that I submitted to you? I want you to know, this is my email that I sent Heritage Land Bank following the April twenty fifth meeting. I'm told, uh, my emails have gone unanswered and even this one went unanswered in the May twenty third meeting. And when I asked to speak during public comment, I was told if I didn't, that because I hadn't registered the night before, that I was going to be unable to speak. There's no complaint process at Heritage Land Bank. So they seem to be just making up their rules as they go along and when they want to hear me speak and when they don't. Um, I, I addressed in the May twenty third meeting that I still yet to receive even an email back from the HLB acknowledging that they received my letter, my email. However, obviously, as I stated and I spoke earlier, they did admit that they are the owner of HLB and the Corps did build it. So obviously, they got my email, but there, again, there's still been no discussion. Um, in the April twenty fifth meeting, um, HLB Chair Marshall actually requested a new asset value study to be conducted for the disposal of the Girdwood Industrial Park because the asset report for it was eight years old and it's too old to determine the current market value of the land. Uh, that is what initiated me to send this email. Um, because they are looking at land disposal options and have not completed an environmental review. They knew they were paying attention, they knew that the railroad performance like a damn. And the confluence of California Creek and Glacier Creek, uh, hit, hit the trussel and it creates a boiling hydraulic. Um, so what's ironic about this is that uh, Chair Marshall wanted to, you know, he did, he, he requested and it was approved to complete another asset value study on this community, which will be published on that site. But yet, we have no, you know, we have no relevant hydraulic data or environmental data. In fact, we're moving forward on data that's seventeen years old. This is problematic. It's going to cause an environmental catastrophe. Uh, anyways, so as I state, I would like to request the GBAS to look into this compliance issue and require HLB to conduct and complete a land use study before another disposal occurs in this, within this community in order to be compliant with title twenty five forty point oh two five C. One more.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions from the board?
I, I don't have a question, Amanda. I have a comment. And thank you very much for all of your time at all of these meetings and in between. Uh, when we're preparing for a meeting and we only see two emails, which is great. I actually couldn't see like part of it, maybe it was my screen, but, um, all your research, we only hear, and then if we're going to write a letter to speak to it, we need to have it. So if you could submit some of what you've done, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's why I want that email, which I, this email really sums up a lot of the work that I have done lately. Um, which, yeah.
And Chair Robles, I think it's called. Um, thanks again for everything you've done on this. Um, there's a few things I'm really not clear about, though. Um, so when I read that section of code in HLB, it's about specific disposals. Um, but that's the way I read it anyway. And I, the way I took the overall item is you're asking for a kind of general land use study across the whole of the valley, which seems to be a very, very different thing because it's not tied to a specific disposal. Um, there was a land, I mean, part of the comprehensive plan did a land use study in a broad sense of how land use, uh, where land use suitability was. Um, so that's included in our comprehensive plan update. Um, so at some level, this has been done valley-wide, but it does point out some gaps and some things that are missing. For example, there, there's definitely things missing about, uh, the hydrology in the community. There's things missing uh, because the avalanche studies date from basically the very late seventies, early eighties. Uh, there's a lot of things, a lot of information that we should, we should get updates on. Um, so I, I, I'm a little confused. It's what the actual ask here is whether it's about the comprehensive, community-wide land use study, which I think we actually have got and we are doing us, or we have done ourselves. Um, or whether it's a request, if there's future disposals, they should go down the land use study path, which they have not done, I believe. Is it the latter or the former?
It should be both. There's, as I stated, every site-specific disposal, because these are large, large land sales, needs to go under, how about some land use study?
Right, so that's, that's about specific.
That's it.
Right.
There, one thing that's really about IPA is that this land you studied from the two thousand and six at Holton Hills, my board through, I would for waste this environmental back in the time. I'm the one who did that data. And so that's how long I've been involved in the environmental policies and managements, you know, and review in this valley. My problem with this that they're moving forward and doing these large land sales on a plan that is actually not compliant. Of course, the issues are not being highlighted. The plan doesn't meet the code.
So the, so.
And they keep on returning and using that same document for every single land sale that they're, that they're doing. That's the reference document.
Right, so the issue here is the, so the specific thing you're talking about is the whole, is the way that a, uh, an old, um, an old neighborhood plan was effectively resurrected and used for, uh.
Right, yeah, under, obviously under the plan, but it was largely under the nineteen ninety five comprehensive plan, correct?
So that's maybe, yeah, that, that's a little different how I took the, how I took the item. I thought this item was meant to be a community-wide, requesting a community-wide land use study. And my other question is kind of very specific, technical. Uh, you mentioned a bunch of policies. Um, I believe they're from the Anchorage Bowl Plan, aren't they? They're from, which does not.
Comprehensive Bowl.
Right, so the Anchorage, if you're talking about the Anchorage twenty twenty plan or the twenty forty land use, they apply to Anchorage Bowl alone. They do not apply. So it's probably, you know, it's the, the comprehensive plan component that applies here is the Girdwood, Girdwood Area Plan from ninety five.
That's correct. But HLB states on their website, the two governing documents that they are to be in compliance with, and that is their formal response to me in the work plan review, is that the Anchorage Bowl Comprehensive Plan that they are to be compliant with. So that's what I review.
Yeah, well, they're wrong. The, uh, the Anchorage Bowl Compreh- uh, Plan explicitly says at the beginning, it applies to Anchorage Bowl. There's no application outside of Anchorage Bowl.
Okay, so the word representative, so that makes, that makes more.
There is, there is a, there is a term which is often misused when people, people, uh, contract the municipality of Anchorage Comprehensive Plan, which is multiple documents, including the Girdwood Plan, the Turnigan Arm Plan, Eagle River Chugak Plan, and the Anchorage Bowl Plan. Sometimes people sort of compress that into just Anchorage Plan and think that twenty twenty applies. But the Anchorage twenty twenty Plan applies. It doesn't. There's a municipality comprehensive plan, which is multiple documents covering different geographic areas.
I understand.
There's probably that.
I understand the layout extremely well, like.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe, maybe HLB doesn't.
So I'm a little confused at the moment, but, uh, I do understand the layout and how the documents work and which guide that documents rapid switch.
Okay, so in that case, maybe the, when you mentioned the policies, there are policies which apply and the Bowl don't apply.
The policies that are in the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan absolutely are applicable to making sure that the public infrastructure within this community are being funded and supported through the asset sales of land disposals in this community.
I'm confused by this, but we can take this on.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think you're quoting a documentary explicitly says, I think you're quoting a documentary explicitly says only applies to Anchorage Bowl. But we can follow up afterwards. I definitely want to understand better. Um, okay. So, yeah, I think the, I was trying to understand the big picture of what the big picture ask is, and I think, I think it's clear to me now. Thank you very much.
A land use study must be completed before HLB commits, completes another land use, land disposal within this community.
Thank you.
Oh.
Chair, sorry.
Uh, I.
Do you want to continue or do you want to head it?
He's going to have the chair back.
Thank you. Please sit.
Sorry.
Please, you had it.
Just a quick, did you, um, were you talking about a land study or a marshing study?
Um, I mean, I want to be, I want to be clear. I want to clarify that too. From the land use committee, there was a couple of questions that came out and a land use study and a hydrology, hydrology study are two very different. A land use study is going to, as, um, title twenty five, you know, C identifies, you know, through F, it needs to identify all those things. The hydrology study is not going to go into that level of detail. It's literally going to be more of a data, uh, a data report with velocities and flows and, um, natural hazards, constrictions, things of that such. So, yes, they may have some of the same, you know, some sections within the report, but they're, they're two different things.
Thank you. Um, any other comments, questions? Order from the community? Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Bring back something, hopefully in the future, specific. But twenty one, agenda item LUC twenty four zero six zero five. Request for GBAS resolution to support the declaration of Old Girdwood as a historic district at the municipal, state, and federal levels. Jennifer.
So Amanda and I have talked about this, uh, quite a bit, uh, throughout this week, I think in first text, when not, um, I still have some questions about it, but, uh, Amanda, you can explain, uh, what you explained at LUC about the historic district.
Good. So I'm here tonight to ask for support from, um, from this community and the board supervisors to assist Old Girdwood in being designated a historic district at the municipal, state, and federal level. In Old Girdwood, we have a unique set of management and environmental concerns that are separate from the rest of the valley. We are located two point two miles down river from the new townsite of Girdwood post nineteen sixty four and are a coastal community at the confluence of the valley's major tributaries. Our parameters are a federal highway, a state highway, a state railroad that is federally funded and a municipality-owned but federally regulated levy. Much of this federally built infrastructure is needed for routine maintenance and to be upgraded to meet the current regulations. The Alaska Railroad Trussel was built in nineteen twenty five and does not meet current industry standards or discharge requirements. The levy will need continuous repair and maintenance under the current infrastructure design of the Alaska Railroad Trussel. Uh, the Federal Department of Transportation has postponed the Seward and Alieska Highway project for only five years, as we know, but they will be back. Change in development is coming to our little sunny side of the valley. When these projects come through, we need to have a seat at the table. Imminent domain is real and the right to exist even as a business owner within the Girdwood Shopping Center is not guaranteed through these projects. We have subsidence, uh, subsidence issues that have caused the culverts in Old Girdwood to sink below the water table or be mostly submerged. The water level is rising within Old Girdwood. Water is diked in and cannot get out. We are lower than the river. Homes in Old Girdwood are sinking and the water is damaging people's homes. Wetland designations need to be reviewed. Many of the current, uh, reclassified wetlands within Old Girdwood are myth classified if they have disturbed soil underneath and the land previously being an upland. From a business perspective, the shopping center mall is having structural issues with the foundation due to design and coastal, uh, erosion issues. That's actually why I had to remodel my restaurant in November. Most people don't know this, but I had to rip up all the tile due to the floor, uh, creating a giant wave throughout the entire gas station. Uh, the entire board, uh, the entire building was poured on one cement, uh, foundation, cement pad, including the sidewalks. Cement pad has broken and is falling off the I-beams that supported due to the subsidence in Old Girdwood. We need updated building codes that promote the well-being and safety of the residents. The coastal management program is funded by the Anchorage Municipality. The Turnigan Arm Comprehensive Plan is no longer, uh, existent and even if so, the Girdwood Valley is black, it's blackout section within the map of the plan. We are disassociated from the other community along the Turnigan Arm. Frankly, we're not being represented. The Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, which although I do fully support in pushing it through because I am aware of the the nuances and conflicting regulations that are occurring, that I want to see it go forward. However, I want to remind everybody that the first two scenarios that the new Girdwood Comprehensive Plan came out with, uh, rezoned all of Old Girdwood, including the homes, into an industrial use. This is why I've recently started spending so much time. It's been a little scary. You can't rezone people's homes into industrial use. I will be fine. I am commercial. I will figure it out. But the homeowners of Girdwood are not. You shouldn't have to fear the comprehensive coming, plan coming out. It has been changed. I'm very excited that my comment was taken extremely seriously when I submitted it. Um, however, I don't really feel out of the woods yet. Um, so as business owners in the shopping center, we've actually sought legal representation. And we, and I am allowed to speak on behalf of all the business owners of the Girdwood Shopping Center. I have their support. The reason why I want to declare a, um, a historic district at the state, at the municipal, state, and federal level is because this is a proactive step rather than reactionary. I believe that development can be done sustainably and I believe that development, development can be done, so it's a win for everybody. Nobody has to lose. It's all planning, but we have to have a seat at the table. And unfortunately, in order to have a seat at a federal table, you need to have federal representation. You want to have a seat at a table at a state project, you need to have state representation. We meet the, um, we meet the requirement, uh, to become a, uh, a, a state and national historic district, which is done through the state preservation and historic society. Um, and, what was I going to say? Uh, what's the beauty of this is that in a municipal level, I, all you, all you have to do is have a historic relevance. And if we were to declare it at the, at the municipal level, we would be the first in the Anchorage Municipality as it, as it's a new program. Program was just initiated and implemented maybe about a year ago. Uh, so what is that process? To be honest, I don't know. Here's what I do know. I'm, we, we have clocks that are ticking that people don't even realize are ticking. These projects are coming back down the line. Uh, and it's better to be ahead of it and know what is coming. And so that way we can produce changes and development that are good for everybody and not just the public infrastructure that, or the entity, the corporation that owns it. Um, I think that this process, it can take years and we need to get going. And I'm exhausted and I'll be honest, I mean, I just worked almost forty hours in the last three days. I'm spent. I don't have time to try to recruit with everybody. I'm looking for community support. This, as a, as a business and as a landowner, a lot of these issues would, that we have, everything from building codes, uh, building codes to, um, getting the public infrastructure actually updated, so it's not negatively impacting the landowners and residents of Old Girdwood is very important. And doing this historic designation not only gives us a seat at the table, it also opens up a lot of funds that can come into the community. Uh, the funds are so great, you know, there's a lot of grants out there right now on sinking coastal communities that we could have access to. Um, it is, it's a really big concern because maybe some of you are aware, but FEMA came in and totally unannounced to the land, uh, landowner in Old Girdwood and declared their, um, land, like, that they can't build on. Behind them and they've been paying property taxes on it like it was a builder's property. Here's the thing, Girdwood's sinking, even my, my platform two thousand and fourteen from my lands shows all my land on my property at fifteen feet. I've got five feet of standing water on three, on two of my. And the culvert's completely full. In fact, the municipality here in Girdwood has used the farthest extent of my land that's still sticking out to try to clear you guys' culverts. We have issues that need to be addressed and we need to be, we need to have a voice. Um, and my biggest fear is that, again, if you're not thoroughly recognized, you don't have a seat at the table. That DOT come, project comes back through, even Girdwood Board Supervisors' voice is not going to really ultimately matter because you're part of the municipality. But if we had a federally, you know, a nationally, um, declaration that Old Girdwood was historic, we could actually save our properties from it in a domain. This would be a win-win for everybody. And the kicker about it too is that Girdwood was actually was established in nineteen oh seven. That was our first post office. Uh, I read that there's documentation from the municipality report that people, Girdwood was actually named after James E. Girdwood, who established himself in the Girdwood area in eighteen ninety eight. Uh, we were absorbed. We were the city of Girdwood until we were absorbed, uh, as we all know, you know, vote that. Yeah. I don't have to go into that in more detail. However, we were absorbed in nineteen seventy five and the government duties that were performed at that time had been, have been negated. It just disappeared. We've gotten serious issues and this could be such a win for the community. Because I also firmly believe that we are more than just Alieska. There are so many of us here that live here full-time. Alieska is not the only way that we can generate. Aliaska is not the only way that we can generate an economy within this valley. We have a completely, I have a completely separate clientele basis out there that is irrelevant to the resort. And I'd be willing to go out to say that 80% of the people that come into the Gerwood gas station don't even know that the Gerwood community exists up this valley. It's a completely untapped market. We do have safety concerns. There is a new NOVA study that has come out that says that we're in a tsunami.
Sorry about that. I hate to interrupt you, but this is straight quite a long way from the declaration of historic. Could let me finish, but it's straight quite a long way from the historical districts. If you could just wrap it up on, just in that topic and then we can, we can discuss what we should do.
Every single one of these issues, if we were declared at a municipal, state and federal level, would give us a table to go sit down and negotiate building codes that are safe for us. We can get funding for evacuations for us being in tsunami zones. We can get funding for the homes that have mold issues and are sinking or been condemned by FEMA. We can get, I can, we can get the DOT to actually build around some of the wetlands if we actually use the Gerwood original plat. So when the DOT project comes back around, we have a say. Now here's the parameters that you design this highway around instead of the DOT choosing what they want.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So I think the, so the, the, the general concept here, just to clarify, is that if there's a designation at the, at least the federal level as being a historical district, that gives you more representation at the table than, than basically the rest of Gerwood have. But at least it would give, which is, you know, you have a particular set of problems in Old Gerwood due to the geography there. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Well, this is new business, so I feel like maybe some work could be done between now and the next meeting or researched by Jennifer, if, what entails applying for this? Like what, what's required and then?
Unfortunately, I don't have time for that.
Right.
As I already stated earlier about like a month ago, I don't have any time for extra projects, especially in July. Any other member of the board that would like to take some?
Okay, thanks for that, Jennifer. I didn't do any research yet on historic district.
Sorry, I was going to say, I know the, we do, there is a historic preservation commissioning. We actually had, we did have Gerwood community member who was, was a commissioner and there's actually an ex-Gerwood community member who I think is vice chair of that commission. So I'm happy to reach out and ask questions of them and see what the process is locally. It doesn't help in terms of state, federal, but we can start there and then move on.
I have initiated the historic district designation at the Anchorage municipal level.
Okay.
And it's been meetings and it's been on the.
I'll follow up with HPC. Thank you. Okay, if there's any more, no more discussion on that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the penultimate item 22. A request of GBS to change Gerwood Park's erect decision on pickleball lines on the tennis courts. This is a park's wreck. Let me take this.
So about a week ago, I was, actually more than a week ago, I was contacted by, by a member of the pickleball community expressing dissatisfaction with how the outcome of the, of the May meeting with the, with the tennis committee and how the, what the outcome of that, of that meeting was from, unfortunately, I was not at that, at that May meeting and it sounds to me that the meeting is well-attended. The meeting has a great set of notes in there and it seemed to me that the, that, that all of, lot of content was discussed, if you will, about how to, what to do with, with the tennis courts and that there was a, a group consensus that came out with the, with the solution as it sits right now, which is Gerwood Parks and Rec has striped out three pickleball courts over on the basketball courts at the, at the school. I met with, with this community member out at the, out at the courts on Friday, I guess it was, and she pointed out just the, that the, that the surface of the courts were, were not entirely level, that there are no fences there for containing the balls. And also probably most importantly is there's no restroom facilities out there for anybody, anybody playing. She brought up points about the tennis court being a multi-use public facility and, and, and then there's, there is discussion about how much the courts are actually used right now. I think that we've had some, some great input come from members of the tennis committee pointing out the history of the, of the courts, how they were built, how they were resurrected, how courts, how two of the tennis courts have become a skateboard park and which, and, and now the, the tennis facility is basically half of what it used to be. So from, from, from that, I believe what, what some of the, what, what some of the members of the pickleball community are looking for is the potential to see one of the courts striped for pickleball and, and then go from there. Kyle, does that, does that seem to?
Yep, that's a pretty good summary. You know, the decision was mine to strike this balance to help find a location for pickleball. You know, been involved with about, with the tennis courts since they were redone, I believe in 2016. You know, we led the charge on getting that after large community support to have tennis courts rebuilt. And through that process, we did look at multi-use courts and, and through that process, it was really determined the community wanted dedicated pickleball or basically, excuse me, tennis courts. And we did recognize that little bears had used the courts for many years and so that use continued. And we also recognized that many community members used the courts to help children learn by how to ride bikes. And so, you know, we continue to recognize that, but through the design of the courts, it was determined that they really wanted to be built through national regulations. And so the striping and, and also both for adult and youth, the striping represent that now. So they are actually competitive courts and can be used that way. This wasn't the first time we had a request for pickleball courts and, and we brought it before the committee several years ago and at that point in time, the committee wasn't supportive of it. And once again, we brought it before the committee and then outreach went out to tennis court, or tennis players and we did not find support for doing it again. So that's when I approached Gerwood Elementary and worked with the principal there to strike, to have strikes be put on there. And I want to say that Parks and Rec didn't do that. It was actually the pickleball players at Gerwood, the Pickleball Association, they did it on their own one Saturday and got it completed and knocked it out. So in where I got that idea is in town, many pickleball courts are on multiple use courts at elementary schools. So some are on basketball courts, some are on hockey rinks and they're well-used that way, that aspect. That said, we don't restrict pickleballs this time on the courts. We have many people who play out there. There's just not dedicated lines. They just use the existing nets and surface out there to play. A lot of them are just rec players. They're not highly competitive, so they're just more enjoying playing that way. So, and we see multiple times out there where tennis players are playing and pickleball are right next to it, that aspect. But the biggest concern that we did hear from pickleball or from tennis players was that the pickleball lines would cause conflict for them when they're playing. So be multiple lines on the court and just make the game more challenging in that aspect. So, so that's, that's what we did and we did present it at the meeting and I had actually little to no negative about the decision. They're very supportive of it. They just wanted to know how fast we could get it done. And we met that next week with the representative from the pickleball group here and we went to met with the principal, walked through it and did that. The other commitment we made to the pickleball players was that we will send crew over there at least once a week, if not needed more, to blow off the courts, which we've been doing weekly. And now we are pulling the trash from over there as well. So we have not explored, we didn't think about exploring the idea of a outhouse over there, but we could consider that if the school district was supportive of it. It would just be similar to what we had here at the tennis courts, just outhouse in that area. So, so, you know, we've done a lot of work to try to appease. And the other thing we made a commitment to the pickleball players is that through park planning, you know, and that's the next thing I'll be coming from the board with is probably for a capital project is park planning for Gerwood Park and Miss Melles Park, master planning. One idea is to incorporate dedicated pickleball courts into that planning and then we can move forward with building dedicated pickleball courts. You know, we've also had basketball players ask about using the tennis courts for basketball and we've denied that request because it just creates way too much conflict and there are two courts over at the school right now. So, but someday we probably will look at dedicated basketball court too. So we're trying to appease everybody, but realizing trying to protect the uses that were originally designated. So it's sort of a quick summary on the whole history of it.
Any other, any questions from the board?
I have a question for Kyle. Can you, can you summarize how all of the, all of the upgrades on the carts have been, have been funded? How much, how much money is, is coming? Public money, if you will, and how much is being raised and solicited by the tennis committee?
Well, when we went for the rebuild, the tennis committee took a very strong lead in fundraising for it and, and then helping us with also getting grants for it as well. And so I can't tell you the numbers off the top of my head, but they did do a significant portion of standing out in the merc deck with, you know, a table and a chair and some signage and just raising a dollar after dollar. And we tended, you know, the Christmas bazaar and things like that. So over time, I know they raised tens of thousands of dollars for the court to help match GBS capital fund for it.
I'll, I see Mitch has his hand up. You have a comment, a question Mitch?
Yes, thank you. Mitch Roth, member of Gerwood Tennis Community. Actually, what I wanted to ask first was to clarify, what's the procedural stage that we are dealing with right at this moment? It seems as though this, this new business item is in the form of an appeal of decision that was previously reached. And does it automatically, is an appeal automatically granted so it can move to old business at the next meeting to be acted on? Or is there some way to oppose the appeal and speak in favor of the decision that was actually already made?
Just, I'll briefly tell you where I think we are. What we're doing is introducing, we're introducing, discussing, discussing what this topic is. So hopefully we can hold on to something where we can actually perform action in a future meeting. So we as a body will probably bring forward a particular item in old business if at least two of us agree or if any of us agree. And then if two of us agree to, to move it. So we're at the beginning, we're at the beginning of this process and just understanding the landscape. So I have some other questions about process as well. You can definitely talk, talk to the decision if you wish to.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, I, I'm a, I play age class competitive tennis and when I moved to Gerwood in 2010, I was really excited about being able to play the league play here and not have to drive into Anchorage. And that was until I saw the condition of the courts, which one of the courts, due to the subsidence that had occurred because of the trash fill under the courts, one of the courts was a giant bird bath that pooled the water on more than half the court, almost two inches deep. And then the, both courts had severe cracking on them so that, on the playing surface, so that you would get irregular bounces and, and they were tripping hazards. So there wasn't going to be any league play held in Gerwood on those courts in that condition. But I found out that the tennis committee had just been formed to raise funds. And so over the next six years, the committee raised approximately $300,000 to rebuild the courts and do the earthwork. And, and so we broke ground in, in 2015 or 2016. I can't remember which, but the, the end result was that we ended up with the best outdoor tennis courts anywhere in Anchorage. And I think the one thing that pickleball players don't appreciate is that the surface on the court is not just paint that you buy at Ace Hardware. It's a special latex sealant paint and it's mixed with sand so that it gives you the proper abrasiveness for the ball to bounce along with good traction. And we were lucky because the same time that the courts were being surfaced, the Alaska Club was resurfacing their courts. And so there was an internationally known court designer who was coming to Alaska, who had friends at the Alaska Club and was going on a fishing trip. And we were able to piggyback on the Alaska Club's court surfacing project and, and get our courts done at a much lower cost than otherwise would have been. However, having said that, the cost was $17,000 per court for the surface that he put on. And the important thing to realize is that the lines are also painted with the same special paint so that they don't form slick spots. They have the right amount of sand mixed in with them and that we, we added the, the youth lines, which are painted in light blue and make the court kind of busy, but those lines are what are used in the Quick Start program of the USTA youth programs. And they were designed by tennis players to be as minimally distracting as possible and to meet the requirements. And they're also painted with the correct paint so that they don't affect the bounce of the ball. So the end result was obvious to everybody and it's pretty clear why any pickleball player who sees these nice courts wants to play on them and have access to them. But the idea that we could add another set of lines on top of the Quick Start lines plus the regulation lines is just crazy as far as them being tennis courts. It's already hard enough to explain what all the lines are for to a beginning adult and let alone a third grader. So I'm just completely opposed to having any permanent non-tennis lines. And the second issue is that the pickleball net is lower than the tennis net. And I've heard people talking about lowering the tennis net so the pickleball players could use it when they do it. But the tennis net tension is not designed to be changed in, on any regular basis. And in fact, that's the number one thing that fails on every tennis court because the crank mechanism usually requires a special tool and people use pliers and other sorts of wrenches that strip it out so that the tensioner becomes non-functional and then you can't tension the net properly for tennis. So I'm completely opposed to having anybody manipulate the tennis, the tension on the net other than a maintenance staff. But I have no problem with temporary nets and no problem with putting down tape. And they can leave the tape there until somebody wants to come and play tennis and we'll take it off because the tape is going to be slippery, for one thing, and the ball will bounce weird off the tape. So that's why we don't like tape on the courts. and the ball will bounce weird off the tape. So that's why we don't like tape on the courts. But yes, I, I feel like the solution that we came up with was a good solution for now. And I was interested to hear about the sales tax proposal this evening. And maybe pickleball courts for Gerwood might be a, a good project that a lot of people would support. And so that's my comment. I think the decision got plenty of discussion and
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. I have a, see, there's another question online, but I just have a quick question for you, Kyle. The, when you, when you mentioned earlier that the, the committee in the meeting, this is the tennis committee?
It's technically the tennis committee.
Tennis committee.
At the time that we were working on the courts, I, I don't think we had found pickleball yet. It probably was out there, but we'd probably name it something else now.
Yeah. No, what I'm just trying to understand is there's a, so this is kind of analogous to the friends of, perhaps the friends of the library or other, other groups that exist to voluntarily, and the skate, skate group as well. They're not necessarily part of the public process in the sense of being formally within the local government structure.
No, they're not a GBS committee.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're a staff committee. So department committee creates, have strong volunteers who want to organize and do think, we have committee meetings, we have friends at the skate park, we have friends at the playground, you know, so
We have, you know, we have the Nordic
The Y3 committees that we use to make our decisions.
And we have the Nordic club, the Nordic Ski Club that effectively does something analogous as well, except they own some of the facilities or at least they pay it.
Correct.
So I just want to understand where that sits with regard to, you know, basically expenditure of public money, which is where our responsibility is.
Right. And then
Definitely, there's definitely some overlap.
Originally, of course, it was, like we were saying, primarily tennis players or people who were interested in, in the courts. I think there were a lot of folks who were interested because of safety aspects, little bears, you know, there were some pretty tough spots there for anybody scootering as well. But just to clarify that as we were getting ready to set up this meeting, there are some people who have joined that group, the court group, who were definitely pickleball players. And then it, the information about the meeting spread rapidly to include that group. So I would say it was actually a really balanced group of people who were in attendance, just to clarify that the tennis court committee is for everyone.
Understood. Thank you. We're obviously not going to act on it tonight, so. Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand. I'll go to you first. Sorry. Your name, if you could just say your name.
Yeah, I, Tyler Cresswell. I live in Gerwood with my wife and son, P O Box 788. I mailed some comments to Mr. Burnett, but I'll repeat them here for everyone. So in addition to the comments that I mailed to, to Brian and in support of the additional comments that were provided by the fellow tennis committee members, Bob Dugan, Franz Wheat, who's not able to be here, and Mitch Roth, I'd like to ask you all to support the decision that was carefully and thoughtfully made and researched, administered by Kyle Kelly, Parks and Rec, to reiterate some of the concerns that we had. Additional lines do create a distraction to competitive tennis in some USTA regions. Dual lines for, for pickleball and tennis prohibit sanctioned play on those courts. And then, and as a result of that could result in a loss of funding and grant opportunities for youth programs that Franz and Bob and I have worked to try to bring to Gerwood. Additional lines also create user conflicts and courts that are already busy. I, I did read some that it's been said that the courts are underutilized. Anecdotally, in my six trips to the tennis courts to play in the last seven days, both singles and doubles, each time both courts have been utilized during my time at the, at the courts in the evenings. There were full tennis players on my way to this meeting tonight, despite the patching that had gone on today. I'm not sure how they got around the locks, but they were full, being used for tennis. As Mitch Roth noted in his comments and in his email, additional lines also present a safety concern. Any lines that are painted by an unapproved or untrained contractor who's not an expert in tennis court construction create a safety hazard. Lines painted with different materials create different levels of abrasiveness and grip. When running and sliding across a hard tennis court is imperative that the surface is uniformed to prevent injury of players. That, that's something that was never addressed in the previous request to have additional lines painted in the court. And lastly, the tennis committee, as well as many pickleball players, participated in these multiple meetings that Kyle held, submitted commentary on the issue. The decision was left in the hands of Kyle Kelly and the Parks and Rec team, who researched the issue to include a liaison with his colleagues in Anchorage and came to a decision that worked for both user groups. Other than the one comment that, that I think Mr. Burnett received, it seemed that everyone was happy with that decision. The folks were playing pickleball at the school tonight. And I'd ask that you trust Kyle's research and do diligence and support his decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan online?
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I had some comments as well. Just for the record, I'm Brendan Raymond Eubien. I'm a Gerwood resident, a frequent user of the tennis courts. And if it's worth anything, I guess I'll note that I made a, a large donation to the court rehabilitation project that, that was completed and very successful, as Mitch noted. My main ask would be to, to, to support the decision that Kyle helped steward and that we, we remove, that this, see this removed from future agendas. Kyle did a really good job finding a solution that benefited all the relevant user groups. And it also kind of paved the will, the way for, I would say, a sense of goodwill between the user groups, which hopefully can lead to the pickleball community getting separate dedicated courts elsewhere in the future as well. And I feel like this, this kind of really undermines that. You know, as, as a result of that solution, the pickleball community now has multiple outdoor courts as well as the indoor opportunities, which is far more than the, the tennis community has. And, you know, I, I think, you know, painting lines on the courts were just, as has been mentioned by, you know, a number of comments made to the tennis committee, it's, would severely degrade their use for the primary intended purpose, which is ten, which is tennis. And, you know, given these other opportunities, it's totally unnecessary. The, the tennis community has been really compromising already on, on this other usage on the courts, despite the history of nets being pulled down, tape being left on the court after usage, which, you know, in a, a difference, I guess, with my friend Mitch, I, I, I prefer that the, the pickleball players don't use tape at all. I would, they are portable line sets that can be purchased that they can use. And they should, I, I personally feel they should definitely remove them. They're definitely a hazard for tennis players like myself who slide on hard courts and running up against tape can be, be a kind of a scary proposition when you're doing that. You know, just the other night when I was out there, I was picking pieces of tape off the court during a match that had not been removed all the way. But anyway, I think, you know, at this point, I think, you know, we, we have a really good solution here, like has been mentioned at the tennis committee meeting. It was, I was there. It was, it seemed to be universally accepted. I think we have a good, you know, good, good way moving forward. You know, proper, proper usage of public recreational infrastructure always needs to be maintained to protect the resource and that, you know, the intended users. We don't allow dog mushing, for example, or post-holing on the 5K, you know, for good reason. And so, yeah, I guess I would just reiterate my ask. And, you know, I, I'm also really concerned that this, having this on the agenda creates, you know, basically danger for the pickleball opportunities that have just been created. I mean, if there are really safety concerns out there, those, those are real and true. We're going to continue to sort of like let this continue on. Then, you know, I think people might feel compelled to contact the school board and ASD to be like, well, why do we have these pickleball lines out there if they're on an unsafe court or something to that effect? You know, that's, if that's actually a genuine safety reason. So I really, I, I don't, I don't want that result to be something that happens. I think something good came out of this. And I don't know anyone else who wants that to be the result. But so that's, that's, I just hope you, I hope that this can, can get put to bed tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Brendan. If anyone wants to move, continue the meeting for another few minutes, probably do so now.
I move to extend ten minutes?
Second. Thank you. I'm not hearing any more than the normal level of complaints. So I consider that consent. Yeah, sorry, Brianna.
Did, did you want to be recognized, Mike? Oh, okay. I'd also like to keep this item for three more minutes. If anyone wants to.
Did you want it?
I'd limit this discussion for three more minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Was there anything more you wanted to say?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
Yep.
I had a comment to make.
Yeah, please do.
I'm Bob Dugan, and I've been playing on the courts for 46 years, every summer. And I value them highly. And I, so I'm here to defend the integrity of the courts. And I play on them almost every day with my spouse. And now that I'm retired, I can play with my other friends in the middle of the week, and we do. And I think that the decision that was taken earlier, I support that because it gives the pickleball players still can play on the course. It doesn't take very long to lay their lines on the court. And I don't even care if they remove them. I'll remove them if I want to come and play. So, you know, successive pickleball groups can use the same lines. It doesn't take that long to put a few lines down. So, you know, they are not being prevented from using the course. And quite frankly, I started playing pickleball myself this winter and I like it. I enjoy it. And if they start fundraising, I will contribute. But I'm very much against changing the course and adding any more lines to them because it just makes it not a good experience to play.
Can I just ask one quick question? You said you, is there, are there times of the week when it is less busy and times of the week where
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
The times of the week, when you say you use it during the weekdays, I think we heard earlier that it's very busy in the evenings. Is that typically how it goes in your experience? It's, the evenings are very busy there and the daytime less so.
Oh, well, I mean, I don't know. I'm retired now. So every day is a Saturday. I mean, I just will go on and get on the court as much as possible. And there's a lot of other people that come in and play here and there. It's not true that nobody plays on the course. We do play on the courts. And we play pretty regularly when we have the opportunity, when it's not raining. And, you know, it's summertime. So
Thank you.
Anyway.
So now that we are sitting together as, as a board, we can, we can discuss this. And I, and I'd like to say that I'm, I am, I am loathe to, to kind of bring refereeing to a, a good community club, club that has worked with other groups and has, and has built, helped build great infrastructure, recreational infrastructure in our, in our community. I did bring this forward to, to get put on the agenda because we were discussing public funds. But I, I really am, I am uncomfortable acting as a referee for a community, a community club like this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for contributing lots of information and the thorough explanation of a well-researched decision and collaboration. And I do not see a necessity or a reason to move this to next month's agenda.
Okay.
I just wanted to real quickly say thank you to the people I know. So thank you for hanging in there to speak up for the, to your interest in the tennis community. And this was a fascinating discussion. I didn't know anything about it. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been reading about pickleball wars across, across the, across the US and internationally. So I guess it was about time we, we had a flavor of that. But yeah, I think, I think we have a, we probably have a, we may or may not bring it back in the future. I suspect we will, but I don't know. We're definitely not making a decision tonight. But I think this is a really good way of expressing the general, the general topic and getting a better understanding of it. I think I'm going to move on to the last item on the agenda.
One question.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Please. Questions for Kyle. Would you be able to research what it would take to get a porta potty out there?
Hundred and sixty-nine bucks a month.
Okay.
I can tell you that exactly. We would just have to work it out.
Now I know.
You just reminded me of something I meant to say, meant to bring up. We'll finish this item, but just, just because you mentioned it, I meant to say this earlier. There is actually a, as you recall, there was a bond proposal for, for public restrooms. There is, our friends at Huddle got the contract to, to sort of learn what the broader, broader community wants about restrooms. So because they started that discussion. So there is actually a survey that just came out today about the potential public restrooms in the future, including citing. So we will share that information. I'll make sure Margaret has it and perhaps we can put it on Facebook so people can go to that survey. Okay, let's get, move to item 23. Discuss the tennis topics for GBO SMOA quarterly meeting on July the 29th.
This is our, it's new business. So we just introduced this item so that you're aware of it. And here's the topics we had at the last meeting. We'll be a new municipal manager. And because as it'll be a new administration for this meeting they're going into. So sometimes these meetings are just more they get to know each other. And because they will probably be pretty green on a lot of these topics unless some of the directors are still associated with, with the different topics that you're bringing. But so we had HLB items last time. We had the Gerwood Airport and land use. And we haven't heard much update on that. And then the request for regarding homeless issues and effects in Gerwood. So we've been tackling that since that meeting. So, so I think that's where we were at from last meeting. If you have any items now you'd like us to write down, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely return to this at your next meeting and confirm it for the meeting.
I'd like to add the Gerwood transfer station and Kelly Toth would like to talk about it. The new Muti staff, if she's still there.
Sure. Will this be with the municipal manager or with the chief administrative officer?
Probably with the, well, that's a good question. I don't know how that will work.
Maybe both.
It may be both. So we'll address that once that administration gets in place and find out what roles are.
Ten trillion changes. Okay.
Yeah, I suppose we can see how it goes time wise, but it might seem, or depending on, we'll find out in the next month. But it might make sense to try to put something about the California decree or the levy situation.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, there's no more questions. We will, I think we have some reports in the packet. Anyone like to move to a chair?
Second.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.